First one to the end, but the wall.
Thought I'd take it off then.
Huh?
Take it off, is that what you're saying?
Well, correct. I can't hear people when they're like a knock.
I'll get some water, please. Thanks, Beth.
Hey, right there, Miss Townsend. Doing good. Got a little bit better.
Thank you.
Got it locked up, that way bad.
He doing it, I think.
Huh?
These masks, he doing them on.
I'm telling you.
Wow. That's nice.
Oh, no.
Generally, we're gonna fill that thing. Well, yeah, that's, you know what I'm saying? So, at some point, if you're not in an innumerable body, stop then. And you're gonna shake. But be safe and reasonable distance with your air flow and your air. Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
You miss, you miss Brown?
Uh, no, she's actually, uh, not here today.
Okay.
You know, move me out to check that little bottom line every day, but somebody, they're in.
We, we, we think that this. That's right. Looks like Charlotte is gonna be clean. Yeah, Josh, Josh is starting to muddle.
The school.
Please and thank.
Is Mr. Wilk okay? Oh, no. What about Bobby? His thumb hurts. The third. This is the third name. How many is it? Thank you, sir. Ooh, ice cold.
That's right. One, one of his things is.
Okay.
It was in, and it's where it's supposed to be, it's just.
You know Coach Gary, Miss Gary.
They are back in state.
Yeah, they do you about this somewhere, don't they?
Less than eight minutes.
Yeah, hopping, I remember them to Florida, he drove the bus.
Oh.
Yeah. I tell you, I was really sorry to hear that.
I've, I've talked, I've talked with her today. And she was so thankful that I called. You know, she's one of my former teachers.
Yes, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I felt so sorry for her. It was very quiet.
I tell you, man, that, I went off the Lewis funeral. They funeral out of Lewis Sunday. And then, um, Virginia was Saturday.
Virginia, Virginia was big crowd, baby.
Yeah, yeah. I stayed in the truck. I didn't get out.
I was real concerned, but I, I didn't call.
And I tell you, you gotta be careful, man, you're gonna have to be.
I didn't, I didn't wanna come. I went to see a body.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you aware of what happened to Harper, with Harper?
I thought he had COVID.
Yeah. You know what his job was.
I never, I thought he was trying, I ain't, I ain't never know what he did.
He drove for G R O T C.
Oh, I had a record.
Yeah, and they announced that a driver had died, so. That's who they were talking about, they didn't call his name. But, yeah, he told for them. Yep.
Hey, Maggie, how are you?
My house has always been the one.
Maybe two years, or maybe.
Two or three, no more than that.
That's right.
Always, you know, would come up. This is the first year.
She's.
Every room decorated.
I tell you.
I enjoyed it. Say it, but by myself.
I just got one, I got soda, Dave.
I have one, thanks.
I'm good, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. For the business address, we don't put anything there. Just in your phone. You might have done, though.
You talking about for the, uh, inter conflict, the interest.
Statement of economic interest.
Yeah, I finished mine. I just put my address.
But it says business address.
But you don't have.
Oh, but you have a business, I don't have one.
No, you're, you're retired, so you just put your home address.
I ain't got no business.
No, I put my, I just put my home address.
But that's not your business, Jerry. That ain't no business.
Wait, you see that?
Oh, yeah. Just to put you up for me, 'cause I did the other stuff, which you also let go.
I just think, yeah, I put my address. I just put, put the code out.
Then, then, then you have to get this. I didn't, I didn't put no business in there. No.
I tell you what, if they wanna get in country, you do where I'm at.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I gotta fill another one up for the jail.
Just make a copy of it.
That's all I'm gonna do, and change it. For purpose, yeah. Huh? That's blackout borders, who haven't put super ten. We could hear the machines running back there.
It's gonna happen as we're ready or not.
Yeah. Yep.
I heard the backup alarm going off, I don't know where that was.
I think that everything. Think it got everything working. Did we do a test run today?
They made a test run all day trying to make sure. Don't mind at all.
Wait a minute, you didn't ask me if I was.
Hey, David, David, otherwise we'll pop something, it's gonna say Bobby Jones.
I understand. I understand, I don't blame you, I don't blame you at all. Not at all. He could be where?
He might be on the Zoom call or something. I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Of course, Terry.
Maybe next week or so, I'll call you, I'll come get you another one.
Oh, you're awesome.
Want some crap?
I mean, she even matches down to her gloves. Well, you too. Y'all matched down to your gloves. They did, she really, I saw her when she got out the car.
Panned, I ain't had to pan eighteen nine and one. Yeah, that's in it. Last time there was a big rain, I took a picture of the water on the truck, the way it's.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Okay.
You gotta bring some over, but I did.
Nine is one, right?
Okay, okay.
Don't leave. Share better. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by and you'll be joined in shortly. If you are the host, press star now. Otherwise, please wait and you will be joined in. Please enter your pin followed by the pound or hash. Thank you. There is one other participant to the conference.
I have a sound check, Chairman Townsend.
Ten four, Mr. Frederick.
How are you tonight, sir?
Doing good, sir. How about yourself?
Doing well, thank you.
Looking well.
Thank you.
Hi, Chairman Townsend, now called it January Board Meeting to Order, and I'd like to announce due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors operating pursuant to and in compliance with its Emergency Continuity of Operation Ordinance. While physically access to these meeting, public meetings is not permitted, the public may participate in the meeting by calling 1-844-890-7777. Access code 390313. And at this time, I'm gonna do the honor without invocation. Let us pray. Oh, Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for last night's sleep, we thank you for this morning early rising. Lord, we thank you for our health, to strengthen activity of our limb. Lord, we thank you for this giving us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding. Lord, we ask that you be with the bereaved families today, pick them up where they're, where they're down. Lord, we ask that you heal the sick from the crown of their head to the sole of their feet. Lord, we ask that you bless those that are here, bless those that are not, that weren't able to be here tonight. But, Lord, we know you know all about it. Lord, we ask that you, ask that you continue to give us knowledge, wisdom, and most of all, Lord, give us understanding, that we continue to make decisions to move Prince Edward County, County forward in a positive way. Lord, we thank you for this year, that's bringing us this far to see a new year, 2021. Lord, we know that with you, we can do all things, and without you, we can do nothing. Lord, we ask that this meeting would be what you would have it to be. And when we come to the end of this old dusty road, that you receive us somewhere in thy kingdom, and we want to hear you say, "Well done, oh faithful servant." Where the streets are paved with gold and there are many, many mansions. Lord, let the words from our mouth, the meditation of our hearts, always be pleasing thy sight. This is your service prayer, in the most holy and precious name, we all say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we ask, and I also like to announce that I wish to recognize the Board of Supervisors member Jim Wilk and Robert Jones are not participating this evening via remote, will be participating this evening via remote telephone access as required by the Board of Supervisors Electronic Meeting Policy in Section 2.2-3708.2 of the Court of Virginia. Mr. Wilk and Mr. Jones have provided notice that they would have to be physically absent from tonight's meeting for medical reasons. Mr. Wilk has requested remote participation in tonight's meeting from his home in Palmview, Virginia, Mr. Jones from his home in Rice, Virginia. They have requests of our conformance with the Board Electronic Meeting Policy and the requirements of the Code of Virginia. Depending on any objection from a member of this committee, Mr. Wilk and Mr. Jones, participation shall be approved and noted in the minutes of this meeting. Is there any supervisor present that object to Mr. Wilk and Mr. Jones be it electronic or telephone? Since there's no, no objections, so approved. Next, we have the conflict of interest. Is there any member of the Board of Supervisors a conflict or disclosure regarding any item pending before the Board of Supervisors pursuant to Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act? All right. At this time, next in line, it'd be the first meeting in January of each year is the organizational meeting of the Board Supervisors. Board wishes to act on the following agenda items. First, we need to elect a chairman, and I've moved, and I moved that we nominate that Supervisor David Emrick be elected as chairman for the Board of Supervisors for the year 2021 and '22. Can I?
Second.
All right. Uh, let me see, Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend, yes. Supervisor Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth?
Yes.
Supervisor Emrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gillum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilk?
Not yet, not yet. He's trying to get on now. Mr. Wilk is trying to get on.
Okay, so it's a majority, so we'll move forward. The new chairman for the year, fiscal year 2021, Mr. David Emrick. All right, so you can come on and take, and repass the gavel on down to him. All right.
Take your name, Pat. Name, 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 name.
Thank you, sir. If such, while we, while the new chairman coming, I just wanna say one thing. I wanna thank the Board, all the supervisors, for all your support in the past year, for all your assistance and guidance that led us through this challenging year of the pandemic. But I tell you, I'll say this, we all stood tall and we prevailed.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir. I think at this time, we need to elect a vice chair. Our nominations are open.
I nominate Odessa Pride as the vice chair.
Second.
Uh, the motion has been properly seconded. Uh, Ms. Pride?
Did I get to vote for myself?
You can.
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Luke? Bobby? Lou? Jim, are you on?
Yes.
So moved, then. I guess we need to set a time and date for our, our meetings. Are we gonna stick with the, with the time we have? Is that what the, the Board would like to do? So moved. Historically, that's the second Tuesday each month at 7:00 PM in the boardroom. It, there's been a motion made.
Second.
As I said, there's been, it's been properly seconded. All in favor, I guess we have to do a roll call vote. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones? Jerry?
Yes.
Uh, Lou?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
So moved. I guess we need to establish a operating system also. Bylaws, the Board states that at the January meeting of each year, the Board shall vote whether to operate on a system with standing committee with or without a standing committee. If it does, the Board shall specify and to name the composition and function of each of the several committees.
You got the bylaws first, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do we, do we just need to do a vote on the bylaws as a whole?
Yes, sir, if you've got a motion.
I make a motion to, to accept them as, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly seconded. Uh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
David Emmer, yes. Miss Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
I guess we need to go to the committees next, adopting the bylaws. Operating system, we, we have had standing committees in the past. Is that the, is that the pleasure of the Board?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobby's made a motion, Jerry has seconded. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
Do we need to make the appointments tonight as, as to who and?
You know, I think if you wanna wait till next month, you can. Mr. Chairman, I think.
Mr. Chairman, if you wanna provide us the list, we can send it out.
Okay, let's, let's do that. That way it'll give us, give us a little bit of time if there's anything that we'd like to change or add to or take away. If that works. Where are we next?
Adoption of.
Adoption of Board Rules and Protocol for Public Hearing, public. Would we like to keep them at status quo? Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly made and seconded. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
I guess, do we need to do the protocol for public participation also? Is it the Board's pleasure to stay with the status quo of the adoption protocol for public participation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, it's been properly made and seconded. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Uh, Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need to give any information on that, or just since it's passed, leave it as so? I think so. For not changing policy, I think you're right. Need to do the same thing for the protocol of comments? Yes, sir. All right, and we have one more, the Adoption Protocol for the Board of Com, for Board Supervisors' comments. I make a motion that we leave it at status quo. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly seconded. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Beverly Booth?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved. At this time, we're gonna do the recognitions, which is the time, it's an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to reconne, to recognize achievements in our community with a focus on accomplishments of the students of Prince Edward County Schools and Fugue School, our employees, our citizen volunteers, and any who served the county of Prince Edward. I think that Mr. Stanley has got a plaque. Here, at this time, we'd like to present you with a, with a plaque as a board, as a chairboard for the county of Prince Edward County January 2021 to December 31st.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more that you know of? Is that all this time, Doug? I guess we go into public participation. In our public participation, we have Claudia Brown from the South Side Center of Violence Prevention. Is she here?
Yeah, I'll be stepping in for her.
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Taylor. I'm the case manager for South Side Center for Violence Prevention in Madeline's House. Unfortunately, Claudia couldn't be here today, so I'm stepping in for her today. Um, first, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Secondly, I'd like to share with you our efforts in 2020. We continue to provide a free and confidential services to include counseling and crisis intervention, advocacy and accompaniment, education, resources and referrals, and shelter to victims of dating, domestic violence, and sexual violence, such as sexual harassment, sexual assault, and sex trafficking. We continue to provide these services to victims who reside in Prince Edward County. In 2020, we served 20 individuals from Prince Edward County, providing a total of 982 shelter stays. As you remember, last year, we expanded our therapy program by having all of our clinical staff trained specifically in play therapy. We expanded our food donation program by, um, to community clients and established ourselves as a facility sheltering animals and families together. This year, our efforts to continue our strategic plan quickly halted and shifted with COVID-19. While many businesses closed or shifted to online services, we have victims living at our shelter. So we were unable to take that route, and we're forced to find ways to improve our facility and practices in a way that allowed us to continue serving victims while also trying to keep staff and clients safe. For example, we usually have 24 beds available. But with the pandemic, we no longer allowed individuals to share rooms that were not family, limiting us to seven rooms. We were able to keep our doors open for most of the pandemic, though we had to initially limit the number of, the number of clients to five people to abide by the state restrictions, and we had to temporarily close for a few days when there was a suspected case. In those situations, we were able to offer hotel stays or referrals to other shelters. Additionally, we knew it was difficult for clients to be able to house hunt during this time. We lifted our 30-day restriction and provided many extensions and stay. In addition to our shelter services, we continue to provide counseling, though we had to temporarily stop offering support groups for safety reasons. As you may remember, we have had clinical psychologists on staff. As she had not been formally trained in school to provide telehealth, she and one of our master's level clinicians both completed an extensive nationally recognized program in telehealth and did exhaustive research on telehealth platforms. For our current clients who cannot continue to engage in in-person services because of COVID, we were able to offer, able to offer translation to telehealth services. We're also able to continue offering advocacy and accompaniment, such as accompanying victims to hospitals, court, or other appointments. Unfortunately, there were times when appointments in or our accompaniment were limited to other facilities due to their COVID restrictions, in which case we were provided accompaniment to office parking lots. The most significant change to our service was our education and outreach program. With the pandemic, all festivals, fairs, and events were canceled throughout our counties. So we did not have the opportunity to table with our outreach programs or to present to groups on violence and prevention. Our outreach staff uses time to create materials and individualize to different groups, such as our first responders and teachers, and to keep a presence on our social media platforms. We look forward to hopefully being able to resume services as normal in 2021, and hopefully we can get through this pandemic together. We thank you for your support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, Daniel Jordan with Hybridge State Park.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Jordan, Hybridge Trail State Park. Thank you, Chairman Emmerich and Board of Supervisors and Mr. Stanley for having me this evening. What a year we've had, as you all know, and I'm very thankful that Hybridge Trail is a park that is really built for the pandemic because we have 31 miles of, of space for people to get out and enjoy, enjoy the outdoors. In 2020, we saw people either rediscovering the outdoors or discovering it for the first time, and our numbers have been through the roof. We've had to shut parking lots down temporarily for the amount of people coming out. And, and as a result, we have seen accelerated wear and tear on Hybridge. And as you all have known, with Hybridge being out in the middle of the, the Athletics River Valley, it is beat down on the sun and is very exposed, exposed to the elements. And so we're at a point now that it needs a major renovation. And so what better time to do it than in the winter? And so this Monday, on January 18th, we are going to close for three months. The contract is for three months. If they finish early, then we can open up back early. But as a result, we are closing down two miles of trail. And we're doing that for a number of reasons. One, it logistically makes sense to close it from River Road to Camp Paradise. Now, River Road on, on the Cumberland side and Camp Paradise will remain open. The rest of the trail will remain open. But we are gonna have those areas closed to the public, and that's gonna allow safety from the public getting in close to the bridge because it is gonna be an exposed 125-foot-tall bridge with decking removed. But also, it's gonna enable the workmen to get in there, get material staged, and have a lay-down yard close to the bridge. So with this in mind, this is a disruption, as you all know, and we hate that it is. But it's, you know, as anything, there's, there is a needed, needed preventative maintenance. And so we will, one, I will keep the, the county up to speed with what we're doing so that you all can see what we're doing because we do see the value and the economic impact that the trail has. But also, we've had a really good support from the community with getting the word out, and I haven't had really any negative feedback. But also, we want to take care of the community as well in letting them know. So Farmville Herald has, has done an article, pushed our press release. You all have pushed, pushed our press release, and we've got it out to all the joining counties, the, the colleges. But also, I have 16 signs that we're gonna plaster everywhere that's, that, you know, notifies the people that the bridge is closed well in advance, but also that, you know, what sections of the trail are closed. And in the meantime, we hope that the community is able to, to see and learn that we're not just Hybridge, we're 31 miles of trail throughout the county. And so we're working up some, some marketing to hopefully highlight those sections in Prince Edward County that are historically important, but also that are there because of railroad. And so, so we're excited to get into May and, and hopefully we'll be past some of those COVID, and we'll have a bridge reopening, and we'll surely do a, when we do reopen, we will do a rededication, and we'll work with you on getting you out there. So at this time, do you all have any questions for me or anything?
Thank you for the work you do, Daniel.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it and hope to see you out on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have Patsy Watson, and I take it that she's on, on the phone? Are you, Patty, are you on the phone? Okay. In that case, we will. You know if there's anything in particular, Sarah, that she wanted?
I, I thought she was joining us via Zoom.
I think she wants to do Zoom.
While we're, while we're kind of waiting on that, I'll go ahead to the supervisor's comments. Is Pride having anything to say tonight?
I just want to wish everybody, well, good evening, everybody. Wish everybody Happy New Year. And Mr. Townsend, thank you for the awesome job that you did this past year in spite of everything that's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to say the same thing, more or less, just that we're glad for everything that is, that has gone the way it has. Jerry, thank you for carrying us that direction. Hope everybody is, is keeping themselves well. Please do so. If there's anything that we can do as, as the Board, please do not hesitate. Contact us as Board members or the staff here at the county. Please let us know what your feelings are and, and keep us updated on what you see going on. Ms. Pride, Ms., go ahead, Patty.
I'd like to say Happy New Year to all. And I'd like to say thank you to the good Lord for taking care of us and watching over us and allowing us to continue to do our job. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Townsend for a fantastic job that you did, and as well to Sarah, Cheryl, New County Administrator.
That's right.
To everybody, Board members. None of us could do this thing without each other. So I really thank God for your participation and all that you've done to carry the county forward. Thank you.
Beverly?
Uh, too, I'd like to say Happy New Year, everyone, and Jerry, job well done.
Thank you. Bobby, you have any comments for us tonight?
Mr. Jim?
Thank you, sir.
Jim?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say we should probably have a new year. And I think that with the combination of Doug Stanley and David Emmer, we're gonna have a incredible year this year.
Thank you all. That's right. Pressure's on now. Both of us. Jerry, you got anything for us?
I just want to say again, as I said before, let's thank everybody for their support. It was, it's, it's most definitely a team effort. There's no I in the word team. And if it wasn't for the team, we wouldn't be where we are today. We have accomplished, achieved a lot of things in the year 2020 despite the challenges of the pandemic. We had a new county administrator. We had a, a, a new landfill operator. We had Mr. Building Ground Supervisor. We done filled a lot of positions. Most of love, we have most love on board. We really done went through some people. But you know what? God, not only good, but he's great. And it goes with determination. And this Board, I'd say, this is one of the best Boards, the makeup and the desire and, and the courage to stand tall and make sound decisions. What's best for this county. That wasn't easy, but we prevailed. We didn't give up. We prevailed because we had, know who we had on our side. We had the good Lord on our side. And with him, we can do all things, and without him, we can do nothing.
Amen.
Thank you, Jerry.
So thank you again.
Lou, you got anything for us tonight?
Yeah, just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I really hope it's a, a safe, healthy New Year for everyone. And Jerry, I want to thank you personally for all your good works. And David, I wish you the best for coming here. And Lou, we're glad to have you for this podium. Thank you all.
And no doubt, Dave gonna be just as good or better.
Get it.
Y'all putting the pressure on now.
You can do it. Just claim it.
Yes, ma'am.
Patsy Watson has joined us now.
All right. Patty? The, the Zoom is you, I guess. Are you there?
Is she muted?
I see her.
Patty, are you muted?
You all, please bear with us because the.
Thank you. Here I am.
Hey, Patty. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for allowing me, uh, the, the opportunity to speak to you all. The Interface Collective is planning another community-wide virtual, um, national, we're gonna participate in the National Memorial for COVID Victims. It will be live on Facebook. The page is Southside Remembering Vigils. We've been doing vigils once a week on Fridays at noon since early May. And we feel like there needs to be a little more emphasis as we start the new year. This will occur at 5:30 Tuesday, the 19th. The, the thing that we are asking businesses and government agencies to do is to illuminate the building by 5:15 that afternoon evening. We know you have the lighting for incialation. You have some lighting on the outside of the building, so we would love to have you participate in this. There will be the online, there will be primarily the interface leaders, clergy in the area, and there will be speaking, there will be prayers, there will be the words of hope, obviously words of consolation for those who have suffered losses in the community. I think it will be a very nice program. And we'd love to have your, your New County Administrator, your Assistant County Administrator, or the Board Chairman participate in the actual vigil. I'll stop and answer any questions that you may have. Patty? This is Sarah. I don't know. Can you hear me?
Maybe you need to go on mic, Sarah.
Patty, the county is launching a new Facebook page tonight, so Trey's gonna reach out to you so that we can link and add you to our page.
Okay.
Or however, I'm not a Facebook, so friend you or, so that as we expand the coverage of our page, that we can add this so that the people that are seeing ours will also see yours. So if we can make sure that you and Trey can share that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. I mean, if you could, if someone would be willing to participate from the county, we would love to have you. We also have someone from the town. If you could let me know by tomorrow, if that would be, I'll make sure that you get the link for the live program so that you can zoom in.
Patty, this is Doug Stanley. Just let me know when and, and the link, and I'll try to make sure I'm available.
Okay. Did you get my email?
I, I know we've had a bunch come. I think I did. If it, if it's in there, I think I'm good.
All right. I will, I will also send it to Sarah just in case I didn't have to write an address, but I think I used the county format, but I'll make sure that it's covered. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time. Happy New Year to you all.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Don't think anyone else was signed up. Is there anyone else, anybody else on? Do you know if anybody is? I'm looking to.
Melanie is on, but she's on the agenda.
She's on the Sarah's side. That's it. Yeah. In that case, I guess we go to the Consent Agenda. Treasure Report, I think you all have a copy of that. Are there any questions, additions, deletions?
I got, uh, I think it's Treasure Report. Of course, some, I saw like a luncheon for $146.
That's, that's gonna be in the.
I saw that.
I saw that, too.
I think that's when Doug first came on.
Mr. Wilk had about eight people, my love, Mr. Love and myself were there in attendance. They had about six or eight business leaders, I think, down at the Riverside Cafe. Bobby, is that correct?
Yes.
I believe that was what he organized.
Kind of a meet and greet, I think that was, Jerry.
We were.
It was when Doug. That was when Doug first came on, I think. That was when Doug first came on. I think that was part of the, part of the meet and greet. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'll just, here's a meal, $146.
Checking it out.
Kind of expensive, but anyway, it makes sense now.
Uh, with, with the same thing on page 67. First of all, that's, uh, is there any questions about the treasures report at this point? If not, I'm gonna make a motion to be approved as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly seconded, uh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Uh, Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Uh, Lou Gillum?
Yes.
On page 67, the, the only thing I, I think we just need to clean up some wording right there. Uh, that was a, uh, morning meeting, not an evening meeting. Am I correct on that? Says that I wish to recognize the supervisor, supervisor Jones, supervisor Wilk with this evening.
This morning.
That was actually, that was actually a, a AM meeting. Just, just so we clean up the wording there.
Good catch.
That's the only thing that I have. Is there? Each board member's been mailed a, a hard pack. Are there any, are there any other questions other than the one Jerry and I had?
No.
If not, is there a motion made to accept them as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been properly seconded. Uh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby, Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
Is there anything else that we need to, on the consent agenda? The rest of them have been reviewed and
Yep.
all the checks and things have gone. I don't think that has to be. On the finance committee, I'm gonna turn this over to Doug and Sarah at this point. I think they're, I think he's pointing to Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So a little bit, this is just informational. Um, we're starting to wrap things up and the audit committee met this evening um, and went into more detail on the, um, status of the FY20 audit. The good news is, is that, um, Mary Earhart and her team have completed all, I'm gonna say almost 100% of the pre-audit work that the board had engaged them to complete for the county beginning this fall. And they have now started to turn all of their information over to the audit, to the auditors at Robinson Farmer Cox. Josh Roller and his team started Monday with the FY20 audit. They will in fact be here tomorrow, um, in the courthouse and I think for the rest of the week to complete the field work. And as the audit committee, um, and the chair of the finance committee learned this evening, we are on schedule to complete the audit um, in order to submit our financial assurance to DEQ for the landfill by January the 30th. So all of the preparations and plans and everything that the board put into place back in October, you know, have been managed and we are on schedule to complete that, um, as anticipated. And with that, I, I would say, I don't know if the audit committee wishes to discuss any of the conversation from the audit. There will be another audit committee when the FY20 audit is completed and we expect that that would be presented to the board of supervisors at their February meeting. Um, and then Chairman Emmert and Vice Chair Pride would meet, um, as the FY, I guess that would be the FY20 Audit Committee, um, would meet with Josh, um, to, to hear if there were any findings for that. So we just wanted to, you know, we've tried to keep the board up to date and, uh, make sure that you understood the progress we were making. And so we're in a good place and, um, hope to have everything wrapped up by the end of the month, which was the schedule that we had presented to y'all. So with that, um, I will, I'm gonna keep moving through on, um, item 18B, which is the authorization to update the management of county accounts. I believe that Mr. Stanley spoke with y'all about transitioning our, um, credit cards to Benchmark, which is the bank that holds, um, the majority of our, um, our financial resources. In order to move away from the existing account, we need the board of supervisors to adopt the two draft resolutions. One to Bank of America, um, stipulating that any prior account, any pri, any individuals that were previously named on the account would be removed and that Mr. Stanley, myself and Ms. Baker would be appointed. And then the second resolution would specifically, as we're in this period of financial transition, authorize the chair and the vice chair that if another instance of having to manage accounts were to occur, and it was just a matter of changing names or having somebody authorize who could speak for the county, y'all would be empowering the chair and the vice chair to execute those documents as necessary.
Sarah, before we vote on those, it's 7:30. Let's go to the public hearings.
Yes, sir.
And, and then we'll come back to that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at this time, the board would like to recognize the citizens' input prior to the consideration. There's an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow microbreweries, distilleries, farm wineries, as by right permitted, use in A1 agricultural conservation zone, district in A2 zoning. And to add a definition with the use and the design standards for brew pub, microbrewery, distillery and farm winery. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, we, I had a, had, was contacted by Mr. Marsh, Mark Smith. You may know him. He has the Adventure Roaks Park. Um, he was, he's looking to get into the distillery business. Um, in my discussion with him, he let me know that he has a neighbor that, uh, will likely want to get into the winery business. So, um, after getting that information and getting his application, uh, or request for a zoning ordinance amendment, did some research at adjoining counties, uh, other localities across Virginia that have similar type facilities. And put, and myself, uh, and Mr. Doug Stanley, county administrator, put together, uh, an ordinance amendment that would enable these in an A1 agricultural conservation district and A2 agricultural residential district. As by right uses, however, with, uh, standards of, uh, operation. You can see that in your packet. I won't go, uh, go through all of that. It does have in there, however, uh, the limitation, which follows state guidelines on distillery seating. And that's not specifically total seating at the facility, but where the distillery operations would occur. That would be 10 seats. Uh, we've got hours of operation. We've also got, um, square footage of floor area and the fact that it, any facility like this would need to be, uh, duly authorized and permitted through, uh, Virginia ABC, which really governs the overall operations of these. And additionally, uh, two other, uh, a couple of other items in here. We looked at, uh, microbreweries and well specifically brew pubs. Brew pubs are more like, uh, restaurant, uh, that would do other, other, uh, aspects. So we set those up to be permitted only with a special use permit. So if someone wanted to do a distillery, as way this is written, they could do that. If they wanted to have a brew pub or a restaurant, they would be coming to you all for a special use permit. Uh, this does have limitations. It does not open up the county for, uh, this, for live events beyond, uh, number of folks. If assemblies of more than 100 persons at any given event would require a special use permit. Festivals would require a special use permit and live music concerts. If you look across Virginia, there are a lot of facilities like these, wineries, breweries and distilleries. They're complementary. And they are small batch in nature. Uh, the planning commission held their public hearing and no one spoke in opposition. And I have had no comments from the public against, uh, such establishments in the county. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have of myself.
This time I'll open up to public participations. Is there anyone online to speak for or against this? If not, I'm gonna close it. The board, are there any, are there any questions? The one I have to you, Robert, I guess is, so we're not really truly voting on the brew pub then, is that correct?
Yes, you would. You're, you're voting, voting to add language to your ordinance to allow it with a special use permit.
With a special use permit.
So if someone would actually want to do, to do one, they would come back to you for a special use permit.
Bobby, you, are you trying to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead. One, one question before we vote on that, on, on B. And I, I read this in the, I guess in the comments also. On the brew pub, it says that they shall be, that this is talking about the barley and things, that shall be grown. And I, I, from what I read, Bobby had asked the same question. Should we change that wording to, instead of saying shall be, say maybe? Because if we say shall be, then that means shall be.
Well, that, you, you, you could. This, the state has some guidelines on these facilities.
Okay.
To be recognized as a, uh, microbrewery or distillery, there are parameters, uh, that, that are in place. And they use the word shall as well.
That's the state guidelines?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So we, we are, we basically have, you know, allow it. But they're, they're really trying to promote farm, homegrown products. And that's why they use the shall there. Um, obviously a lot of bring hops from different sites and things, but they want some of those components to be grown on site versus just be a bar at somebody's property, if that makes sense.
And this would allow, this would allow if a, if a farmer or an applicant had leased land and, and they would, they don't have to own the property that they, if they lease additional fields, they, they could, that would qualify. I'm aware that, you know, uh, for your information, Mr. Smith does have an operating farm and does have a farm service number. He was the first person that I believe will come to us with an application.
I'm, I'm gonna move that board of supervisors approve the ordinance amendments as recommended by the planning commission to amend the.
Is he closed?
Public hearing?
Public hearing is closed. Yes, this is, this is just.
amend the Prince Edward County zoning ordinance to add the definition of distilleries, farm wineries, micro beer breweries, and to allow them as by right use in the A1 to A2 zoning district with the use and design standards and to define and allow brew pubs as used as permitted and issued a special use permit. That's a motion.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second? Actually, I think Bobby. Go ahead, Bobby. I think you made the motion. Are you second, Jerry?
Yeah.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Are there any other questions? If not, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
David Emmert, yes?
Yes.
Uh, Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Uh, Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved. I guess the next one is a request by Sherri Armstrong and Connie Armstrong for a special use permit to operate a retail consignment store with a flea market on tax map. Numbers 19A-A-27, 19A-A-A-28, 29 and 31 with the address of 301 Catalpa Lane Prospect. Back to you.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I had an application, uh, for you from Sherri and Connie Armstrong. They have what, uh, the old Catalpa store in Prospect. Uh, there are a number of parcels. Collectively, they don't add up to a, a great amount of acreage. They're small, small tracts. But she has purchased these, these, this property and her, uh, wants to use existing store building as a consignment retail store. She, her plan is to build an additional, uh, number of storage buildings, which you'll see on the, uh, site plan she's provided. Uh, it, it details the size of those, uh, structures and the general location. Uh, of course, any location, any locating of a building would fall under our zoning guidelines and as far as setbacks. But she has a very detailed, uh, plan with, that would go, go between a timeline of, uh, up to eight years. She also references and talks about in the future, maybe having an event. But I want to make it clear that this is not an event permit. Uh, and she understands that if she ever has a public event, um, like a, a Catalpa Day, a Prospect Days or something like that, she would come back to you all for an event permit. Uh, but this was primarily a, uh, retail, uh, store. She's gonna have consignment items. And she may at some point have some outdoor, um, flea market yard sale items that she would have their own consignment as well from time to time. Uh, the planning commission held their public hearing and no one spoke in opposition. And I have had no, no comments in opposition of this request since we advertised.
Robert, would it be your opinion that we need to make sure that, that, that it sticks with the site plan and not, not include this, um, any, any type of zone or anything for special uses at this time, after the first?
Ye- yes, I would, I would. She has submitted a site plan which details that a number, number of buildings, uh, that she wants to construct with a square footage not to exceed. So she understands that. I would, I would make that part of your, uh, if you so wish, make that preliminary site plan, uh, part of your, uh, conditions. Uh, the, the planning commission recommended to make sure that, uh, site lighting didn't spill onto adjoining properties. Um, and again, this does not, uh, does not approve her as a, as an event. Any, any public events, uh, would have to come back to you all.
All right. At this point, let me open it up to, participation. Is, is there any, is there any online participation for or against this special use?
Hi, this is Sherri.
Hey, Sherri, how are you?
If you have any questions, go ahead and ask them. I'm good, how are you?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
If you have any questions, so please ask them.
Yeah. Are there any questions from the public? I don't think we have anybody on right now, Sherri. Seeing, seeing that there are none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and I'm gonna open it up to the board. What, what does the, what does the board think? Do we want to change any wording? Do we want to add, make, make sure that there are some additions or deletions there?
I think you mentioned something about the site plan.
I, I would like to make that a requirement that we stick with the site plan and that if there's, if there's any events planned or whatever else, that they would have to come back to the board for that. Would you agree with that, Mr. Love? Bobby, what did, what did the, what the zoning commission think? Anything else from the board?
David?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the area? This, this is rail, the rail that comes right through here.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to reapprove the special use permit.
With the special language?
With defiling, uh, uh, amendments to the, the two conditions, site plan and make that.
The, the two conditions with the, with the events and, uh, to stick with the, with the primary site plan that is brought out now. Is that right, Mr. Stanley?
Yes, sir.
I second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Uh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved. Is, Melody, are you on, are you online?
She is, I believe. Have you guys Scott?
Yeah, I was just gonna see for, just. That's all the public participation in it. Yeah, I, I did. I skipped over. Since, since we're finished that, Sarah, let's, let's back up to you since you had started. Okay, let me just see if Melody, that way she can go ahead. That, because that's, that's more or less a presentation. Melody, are you online? Are you muted? Melody is, is from Commonwealth Regional Council. There, there she is. Hey, Melody. Okay.
Need to unmute Melody if you can.
We can't hear you. Can you hear us? Shake your head. You can hear us. Are you muted on yours by any chance? Are you on?
She muted.
She's muted.
She's muted.
Give us just a moment.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask Scott Frederick if he can speak to us?
Yes, I will. Melody, hold on just a minute. Let me get Scott and see what we can do. Scott, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't our system.
Go ahead, Scott. We're gonna hear from you while we're, while we're working on this.
Okay, can you guys still hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Um, I'll put together a quick announcement for you.
Well, I put together a quick update for you guys. It was requested, and I doubled it a little bit last month, so I promised to give you a thorough update on the two smart scale projects that are coming. At the Warsham, the new turn lanes are going to be built there, and then the roundabout at the Fisher's D. So, that, those two projects are getting awarded and built by the same contractor. You can build both of them in one contract. It's $3,303,502.15. So that's a pretty big investment in Prince Edward County. The contractors, Virginia and Carolina, paid it. So, we had our free construction, it's awarded, and we had our free construction concert, conference last week. And at the pre-construction conference, the contractor requested, the, but there's a process to get through for that. So, I felt like it was a very good, good sign that you figured to get started. So as soon as all the, all the checks are, check, check boxes are checked, we'll be starting. That's coming soon. The turn lanes at Warsham are going to be built first. They're going to be built by September 3, 2021, so we'll see the bulk of that construction this summer. Then after that, the roundabout will be built, and it has to be completed by October 14, 2022. So we'll see most of that work following summer. There is going to be a detour installed, and that's why the turn lane should be built first. It's going to, maximum install time for that detour is 56 days. And it's going to be the leg of the roundabout that comes, that 133 that heads over towards San Francisco. There's very specific language in the construction plan that it has to be installed after graduation, and it has to be removed before the students move in in San Francisco. So I feel like we've covered ourselves very well to not be a traffic nightmare for the college students. We've done our due diligence there. So, if you have any questions about that, I can try to answer them, but that was kind of the bulk of the, that's like the bulk of the details right there in a nutshell for you guys. So, other than that, some stuff that we've done that's not so routine this month, though, we, we got those easement signs that I mentioned last month at Ferguson, and I guess it's 626 and 687, and we did a major site distance improvement there by cutting some trees and wrecking track. We removed the tree on Bluefield Road that Supervisor Pride brought to my attention. That went right there at the edges of travelway. So, thank you again for bringing that to my attention a second time. I want to thank Supervisor Gillum, who spoke with our superintendent. We got that location nailed down for the drainage issue on 10O Road. We've got the facilities called in. We're going to do some ditching there, get that culvert pipe flowing again. We had two crushes with forecasted bad weather. Our crews responded appropriately. Luckily, we didn't have any icing conditions for that though. We had some drainage issues called in on Junction Canal Road, so we've gone out there and done some investigation. We're probably going to have to do a good amount of ditching on that for both to get drainage properly again. Then, I feel like there's one that I forgot to put on the list here, but if you guys remember it, please let me know. There was a lot of discussion last month at the 307, 460 interchange. Our crews were out there, I think it was the very next morning, put the stone back in the shoulder area on the westbound inside shoulder of 460. Traffic kind of moving over and beating it out, and we've been trying to keep a close eye on it. The traffic isn't used to the new traffic pattern yet, so we've had to, had to keep a close eye on it. I discussed the signage requests that you guys brought up with traffic engineering, and they told me they're going to take a second look at it and make recommendations. So I'm just kind of waiting to hear back from them. And then some of the other items that were brought up. It's the chairman's announcement, but, okay. I think I've actually covered them all.
Is there, is there anything from the board that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would say, Trey, I've noted that there were, I think, just this week, two more accidents at 307. At that intersection, we saw the rice fire. It was dispatched. The sheriff, the sheriff may know if there are more or not, because we only see when fires dispatched, not just when law enforcement. So, yeah, two, we know there were two more this week.
It's only been two more accidents, but there's been some more close calls there.
At the 460, 307?
Yes, sir. There's actually, there's, there's actually been two accidents there, Scott.
Yes, sir. Got time to vote about that. I'll follow up with, see if I can hurry it up some.
Anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to mention something. Scott, this is a desk pride again about Avaleen Road. Mr. Stanley and Sarah had the opportunity to ride with me out on Avaleen Road. I mean, the condition is still bad with the science, but the road going to Chapel Road, the issue that he addressed, when might that be taken care of? Because a pipe will have to be put there, and just some correction at the end of that road.
Right where Chapel ties into Avaleen?
Yes.
But last month, I think you brought it to my attention, and we, it might have been Sarah brought it to my attention. Anyway, I think some trucks had gone through there and gone over the end of the pipe, but we were able to open it back up just by shoveling out the end of the pipe. Is it still pond and water there? Because I have an impression that it was fixed when we cleaned it out. If that's not the case, I can certainly take a second look at that.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back tomorrow and look at that.
Yeah, I think we've got it opened back up and proper drained again, so. But yeah, please, please let me know, and I'll take a second look at it as well.
And when might work begin on those shoulders of Avaleen? I'm going to keep you posted on that, Scott. Because that road is still in bad shape.
The lanes are currently closed, so we're unfortunately waiting for the warm weather to come back.
Okay.
I would say in March will be, my plan is for us to be out there in March, but I would tell the guys that as soon as we start getting warm today, we'll be heading that, heading that way to start that way.
Thank you, Scott.
Anything else from the board? Bobby, you have anything for Scott?
No, I'm going to take my time.
Scott, thank you for what you've done. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's see if we have Ms. Melody one more time. Melody, we see you, but we cannot hear you for some reason.
I sent you to call in the access.
Okay, she's going to call in, no problem. She'll be with us in just a moment or so. This will be about a, this will be about some money coming back possibly to the county. You there now, Melody?
Hey, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, we can. Go ahead, Melody Foster from Commonwealth Regional Council.
All right. I'm here tonight to be presenting a recent one, about the back handle in earlier today, in the Minister's office. But I heard a special street development go over a success. She'll have, editor, she's here.
She had a...
Can you hear to the... We've had a very difficult, abused act, kind of award, and countless numbers. We also very happy to have one in Norway, the Atlantic Council, who brought in full numbers. That happens to be a... It's a draft news letter, or... That goes over, transcut at 21. You'll see on that tape, that's pretty funny, perfect, effective, and close project. Eight total, 270,000. So it's a 300,000, 249,000. First grand total across the 8L, 278. In direct, and it's... And then there's also... The intent after the... There's been a connection to 40,000, 8,000, 30,000, 6,000, members to be reached. Back to 2014, 30,000, that's a call. That's total, first, are they, that's, 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 that's... When that is, again, those funds are returned to the... That already is... Therefore, 42,000 survivors should be returned to members. In doing so, if anyone knows, give a search, look at that, bring in that team, and... And we appreciate your members. Any, any questions?
Just, Melody, I'm going to, since you and I both are on the same board, I'm going to give them just a, kind of a quick update on, on this check right here. It's because we, a couple of years ago, decided that anything over 500,000 in the fund balance would be returned back to the counties. I don't know whether you all heard Melody say that or not. But we can reinvest that if, if we would like to. What, what some of the things that they do for us is they do part of our grant writing, possibly all of it. I can't answer if they do it all at this point. They also, at this point, VDOT has required, keep, keep me straight on this, Melody. VDOT requires for certain things for us to have someone to kind of oversee it, and CRC actually can do that for us where we don't have county staff that, that is designed for that. Is that correct, Melody?
Minister, you're correct.
So, to make a long story short, that's the reason why that this money's coming back is because the CRC Board, and Melody especially, has done a terrific job of keeping up with all this stuff. So we can either accept this, or we can, we can reinvest it, or we can reinvest part of it, or, or whatever. And that's up to the board. I'm going to abstain from any of this because I happen to be on that board also. So it's, it's up to the board as to what, what your privilege is. I'm going to let Doug speak now.
I'll also say that the amount again is $8,536.06. That is our proportionate share of the, I guess, the overage over the $500,000 fund balance.
So it is, it's the pleasure of the board as to whether you even want to reinvest any, all, or if you want to just accept the money the way it is. So I'll leave it, I'll open it up to your, to your comments at this time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Wilk.
Go ahead, Jim.
I would like to echo, I would like to echo what you said about quality of what we're getting from Melody Foster. She does an outstanding job for us.
She, she has done an outstanding job, and you all may not know, but just a few years ago, they didn't have any money at all, and they struggled very much just to kind of do all of this. And we brought Melody on. I say "we" because that's, that was a board decision. Anyway, to make a long story short, we have righted ourself, and she is doing a terrific job. So, if, if the board would like to accept it, we can accept the money if we want to reinvest it. It will go towards part of reinvestment in, in our part, so that, it's up to the board. Like I say, I'm on the board of CRC also, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this at this point.
Mr. Stanley, what do you suggest?
Well, certainly, I'll tell you what, CRC has been extremely helpful with us on the industrial access park road. We're, we're paying them to help manage those grants with the Tobacco Commission. So, you know, I think they are an extension of, of our staff. Obviously, Melody, I don't know if you can tell us what the other localities are doing. It may be good to maybe reinvest half of it, but normally, you wouldn't have that money coming back to you in a lot of the other regional commissions across the state. I will say that. That, you know, you have an annual appropriation. That amount goes, if it's over, it stays. Y'all are being great fiscal stewards of your resources and able to generate a surplus, which is a good thing for CRC. So I think you want to encourage that in some way, whether it's given half back or all of it back. But I think they do a great job, and we want to continue to support them.
I'll make a motion that we reinvest half of it.
There's been a motion made to reinvest. Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry? All right, there's been, it's been properly seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones? Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
All right, so the motion is we're going to reinvest half of it back to you all, Melody.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Is that all you have for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Melody.
All right, in that case, we're back to you, Ms. Sarah. And I think we were at the authorization of the update for the management. Is that correct, the resolution?
Yes, sir. So the, the two resolutions, one would authorize the transition of the management of the account, and the second one would authorize the chair and the vice chair to take care of these situations should they arrive, arise in the future in between board meetings.
You have a, you have a copy of this on page 114 and 115, if you're...
14 and 15.
If you, yes, sir, your board pack, 114 and 115. I think that both of these, they're not the same resolution, but they certainly are co-joined in the fact that they will, they will, they will solve some issues that we have had in the very last future. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt both of these resolutions together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Patty Cooper seconds, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
David Emmerich, yes. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Beverly Booth?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved on the two resolutions.
So, item 18C, I believe there were two current members of the board that were on the Board of Supervisors back in 2005 who heard the word CUSAB before, which is the Qualified Zone Academy Bond. This is a school financing that was done, and I'll call your attention to page 121. This is an excerpt of the minutes from the October 3, 2005 meeting. And on page 121, if you see Immediate Plan, it shows where the school board presented and the board approved the use of $1,116,857 of CUSAB, Qualified Zone Academy Bonds for the renovation, and the purchase of equipment, which was the following list. So these, this CUSAB came, became due in December. It's a little bit complicated. I'm going to let Mr. Stanley explain it if anybody has any questions. But the long and the short of it is, is that this is all of this, the accounting for this bond is all held in a specific fund in the county budget. But there is no approved expenditure transaction in the FY '21 budget to enable the county to close out this bond with Bank of America. So, in consultation with Mary Earhart and with Robinson Farmer Cox, because the amount of money that has, that is involved in this transaction triggers the code section that requires the board to do an amendment to the FY '21 budget, and you have to hold a public hearing. Prior to us being able to actually complete the closeout, we are asking the board to authorize a public hearing for the February board meeting. At this point, the, the money that is being held by Bank of America is just awash. The money is held in Bank of America's bank in our name, and the money needs to be transferred to Bank of America. Mr. Stanley can't authorize that because it is a financial transaction of the county that was not budgeted. So the board will have to authorize that transaction. We've also learned that there is a final payment, and we're working with the schools on that. And when we have all the details... And when we have all the details of that final payment, we'll, we'll come back to the Board in February, and that'll be part of the, the action and authorization at the February Board Meeting. But at this point, we just need the Board to authorize the public hearing. Now, earlier this evening, which is not in the Board pack because, um, Ms. Cooper Jones brought it to our attention during the Audit Committee, it's our understanding that the schools may have received additional federal funding. We have not heard from, um, the Superintendent's Office yet about this money. It would be good news because it's in excess of $3 million. But should we learn in the next few days, and we'll reach out to the Superintendent immediately, um, the, to enable the schools to spend that money because it was not budgeted, that would also trigger the public hearing requirement for the FY '21 budget because of the amount of money and the percentage of the current budget that it represents. So, with the Board's permission, um, if we learn that the schools are ready for us to appropriate that money or to bring it to the Board for appropriation, we would ask y'all to maybe amend the recommended motion to not only include the CUSAB in the public hearing, but also the additional $3.1 million that we understand the schools are anticipating, and that will allow them to be a little bit further ahead in the budgeting and the expenditure of that money. But we haven't received anything yet from the schools.
So, I guess we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly made and seconded to, and I, and I would add to that that it would to include the 3.1 if that in fact comes about.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Pride?
Now, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When was the school notified? I mean, they know about this.
I, I will refer you to Supervisor Cooper Jones.
Notice went out January 11th yesterday.
Yesterday.
Okay.
And it went, I'm sure by email, so I'm sure they received.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes.
Uh, myself, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
All right, you got that for.
Okay, item, um, 18D, earlier this summer, the Board, um, as we were awaiting the economic impact of the pandemic on the county's budget and on the tax collections, the Board had asked that all capital expenditures be frozen and that we come back and speak with you specifically, item by item, as we know that they are, um, are necessary. At this point, we would consider the County Animal Control Department. We've hired a new Deputy Animal Control Officer, she is on Board. And I think y'all are aware of kind of the, the recent issues with county vehicles and some vandalism. So, we had another case of vandalism this week of the old animal control truck that had been loaned. So, um, we need the new animal control truck for the operation of animal control. But we need it even worse now because, um, we've had another catalytic converter case occur on another county pickup truck. So, um, we would ask the Board to release these funds so that we can start the procurement of this, um, animal control truck that is in the current FY '21 budget. But we're asking you to just release the purchase of the capital, um, item.
I move that, um, we released the 35,000 for the Animal Control Department budget.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Beverly Booth?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
And Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved.
So, the, um, the last item, Mr. Chairman, item 18E on page 127 is a series of, um, of budget amendments. The first one, um, the good news is, is that the county facilitated the Hampton-Sidney Police Department to receive 34,000. And in fact, I don't know that Melody is still on the, um, the, um, okay, she's not. Um, but this is a grant that the CRC wrote, um, at the request of the county for the Hampton-Sidney Police Department that allowed them to upgrade their, um, law enforcement communications. We just learned at the 99th hour, though, that the state expects that the count, a county check will pay for the equipment, um, not a Hampton-Sidney check, which was unexpected and which was why, um, it was not brought to the Board earlier. There's no cost to the county. What this will be is basically a, a pass-through. We will write the check, and then the county will be reimbursed by the state. The CRC is gonna be facilitating the reimbursement request. So, it should all turn around pretty quickly at no cost to the county. But it has allowed the College and their Police Department, which is, they are a big mutual aid partner to the Sheriff's Office, um, and this has helped with our interoperability with the Sheriff's Office and their mutual aid partners. So, we need the Board to authorize, um, the budget amendment so that we have line items in which to, um, to conduct this transaction.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That's been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
Um, item number two, the pre-audit services. So, earlier tonight, um, the Audit Committee and the Finance Committee Chair had the opportunity to hear directly from, um, Mary Earhart about the scope of work that she had conducted in, um, assisting us with the pre-audit services. Unfortunately, the, I'm gonna say, the breadth of, um, of the work that was required in order for her to get her arms around everything that needed to be done in order to prepare us for the FY '20 audit was, was deeper than, um, any of us anticipated. And I, I would let the Board members that are present address the specifics. But, um, we are requesting an additional appropriation from the Board for $14,000. This will, this is, some of this is for time that she has already spent. Some of this is to enable her to work with staff to nail transition for the FY '21 fiscal year and the entries that are required, and to coordinate with the Treasurer's Office. And where we will land at the conclusion of the work, um, of the FY '20 audit and the work that, um, Ms. Earhart and her team have done is that we will have everything ready for an FY '22 budget for our new county administrator. And we will have, I'm gonna say, everything tidied up for the new Finance Director that the Board has approved hiring. So, uh, I think we will, everything will be reconciled, everything will be balanced, and all of our, um, records will be ready for the new administration and ready for the Finance Committee as they begin the work on the budget to bring recommendations to the Board for FY '22. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm glad we approved the request for the pre-audit services for FY '21, 14,000.
Second. Been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Uh, myself, yes. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
Item three, uh, the Sandy River Permit. The Board had, um, earlier, we thought that Timmons would be here to brief y'all. Uh, I think the Board is aware that the, the strategy for the submission of the, um, application for renewal of our water withdrawal permit has changed a little bit. And instead of renewing, I mean, of submitting the application, earlier in December, Aqualaw and Timmons determined that we'd be in a better position if we went and coordinated first with the environmental agencies of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the, um, the US government. And so, there will be more upfront engineering work conducted prior to the submission. The Board's original appropriation earlier this year was based on what we thought the schedule would be. This is now based on the schedule. And, um, I know that, uh, Mr. Stanley has been speaking with Mr. Hines about scheduling a work session in the coming weeks. Our closeout of the comment period with the environmental agencies is.
Nineteenth.
So, sometime after that, Timmons felt like that they would be in a better position to brief the Board and to understand if any issues had been raised by environmental agencies on the, on the, um, the proposed permit application. So, in the meantime, we have to, um, to be in a position to continue to pay, uh, the Timmons Group for the engineering work that they are conducting on our behalf.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to, I guess we just need to move this to a line item, is that correct?
Yes, sir, just approve the, um, the proposed, um, budget amendment.
Is there, is there?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
And item number four on page 128, I don't want to steal Maggie's thunder, so all I'm gonna ask is that you approve the appropriation and let Maggie really explain the good news about the Virginia Tourism Grant.
This is also just a, just a proposal.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah.
Jerry, you got a second?
Yes.
Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Uh, Lou Gillum?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. In that case, we have the, is, is Donna, is she on, online, or do you know?
I'm gonna give the report, yes, sir.
This is gonna be the treasurer's report, and Mr. Stanley's got this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I apologize, uh, Ms. Nudley is on, uh, medical leave and off, but she did send a report in. Uh, the Board has requested that, uh, a Treasurer's Report, an update be provided for the months of January, February, and March while we have Ms. Pam Conyers in helping their staff, um, with, um, closing out last year and working on issues this year in the office. So, the following training has been initiated, this is on your table pack on the dais, the ins and outs of the general ledger, how to read it in depth, when to do a journal entry versus a ma, uh, department master to address the general ledger, making a journal entry, monthly check call for reconciliations, including how to balance taxes and report collection rates, reports to use, how to research and reconcile monthly trial balance, the monthly inter-fund transfer of cash, how to run a variety of reports to use for research or reconcilment, and credit card fee reconciliation. Accomplished for FY 2021, uh, the Journal Entry Notebook for all journal entries in numerical order. Uh, that was a recommendation of the Audit Team. All inter-fund transfers between the school, cafeteria, and general fund are up to date through 12/31/2020. A template's being created for Board reporting for tax collections, and the first report is in the packet, uh, attached with it on the back tonight. And the protocol written for credit card fee monthly reconciliation, and a protocol written for non-adjudicial land sale reporting and fund setup. I, I did report this at our Audit Committee meeting, but, um, for the FY, really, the FY '20, the December tax collections, um, I asked them to run a report for '19 to do a comparison because I was worried about the impact of COVID-19 on tax collections. So, for real estate, uh, last year, we were at 91.7% collecting, collection through December 31st. This year, we're at 91.8. So, um, we're actually a little bit better slightly. And, uh, for personal property, last year, we were at 82.2%. This year, at 81.4, so we're all four tenths of a percent, or forty tenths, four tenths. So, pretty much right on top of the numbers from last year for both. Does not seem to be an impact of COVID as far as people being able to pay their taxes. Part of that, probably, y'all waived your, uh, credit card fees, I'm sure that helped. Stephanie noted that, that we had more people, I think, paying by credit card. So, um, I feel good that, uh, collections are at least on par with last year. We'd like to see, obviously, those numbers higher. But if you look at the out-years, um, and look back, you know, from '18 back, we're over 99%. For last year, we're at 97.2%, so they're doing a good job of collections so far. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can, or at least pass them along to the Treasurer. We will have her again on the agenda for next month for another report.
Are there any questions from the Board? I know you just, probably just got this particular.
Got today.
They're progressing.
They're progressing, I think. I think, you know, Pam's helped, certainly been helpful, and I think the goal is to get staff trained up that they can handle this on their own, and I think, uh, Stephanie especially has learned a lot through the process, so.
I'll say, no, no questions, but as we sit in the Audit Committee there just log, I think that we're definitely going in the right direction. Some issues that, that we have to deal with, but, uh, I think we are working, working our way through it. So, if, if there are any questions from the Board at any time, please don't hesitate to contact either the Treasurer's or Doug, either one, and I'm sure he'll pass it on or answer it if he can.
I'd like to say I appreciate Doug giving us that information because it gives me a little relief when I go to the, aren't we with this year?
And, and it looks like that we're, as Sarah brought up, that we're on schedule to have everything done on time, it's just they're gonna get started tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, so.
On field work.
Yeah. Yeah, on field work, so that, that's a step in the right direction there. There are, there are a few issues and things that we may have to deal with, but just, just so the Board knows that they're definitely working on it. Sarah, I guess we're back to you for the Board of Equalizations. I kind of skipped around, and then here we go.
So, as the Board is aware, the five member of Board of Equalization will start their work this spring. They have their organizational meeting on January the 22nd. They have completed their mandated training with the, um, the Virginia Department of Taxation, and they will take their oath, they will convene and take their oaths of office, um, next Friday. With that said, there were two other items that, um, I'm gonna say housekeeping or operational items that the Board will wish to address. And one is, um, compensation. The Code of Virginia says that, um, members of the Board of Equalization shall be compensated for the time that they spend. Six years ago, the Board of Equalization that served this county actually took action and said, "We wish to not be paid." This Board has not convened as a body, but we felt, you know, that it was prudent since the Board was meeting to go ahead and, and take care of this. So, we would ask the Board, um, to appropriate $5,000 to, um, to start, or, I guess, first of all, you have to set their salary. Excuse me, I need to put my glasses on so that I can see. We researched the surrounding counties, and it appears that the going rate for compensation is $80 to $100 for a full day, $40 to $50 for a half day. So, um, the Board will wish to set, the first action would be to set the, uh, compensation, and then, once you do, to appropriate funds, um, to enable us to pay them.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we stick with what the other counties are at, uh, 100 for a full day and 50 for a half a day. Is there any discussion or a second?
Second.
There has been a second, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Uh, Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved.
And, um, then, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could get you to, it's, I neglected to put it on there, but to go ahead and approve that budget amendment that's on page 170?
Yes, ma'am.
That would authorize?
Yeah, I moved, uh, $5,000 to be appropriated for the said, uh, salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And Lou?
Yes, sir.
And then the second item, um, Mr. Chairman, the, the good news is our Board of Equalization is very, um, wise and experienced as a Board of Equalization. We have two members that this is their fourth time as a Board member. We have one member that this is her third. We have one member that this is her third time as a Board of Equalization member, and then we have two very, I'm going to say civically involved, first-time board members, but both of whom have served in, on public bodies. So while I don't anticipate that we will have a lot of legal issues, every once in a while, one does arise, and so with the board's consent, we would ask that you approve having the county attorney serve as legal counsel to the Board of Equalization if it is needed.
So moved.
Second.
Has been properly made and seconded, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
All right. I guess we're Piedmont Court Services. Donald Williamson, are you online?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir. Hi, Donald.
Happy New Year.
The floor is yours.
Okay, well, members of the board, Mrs. Stanley, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So Prince Edward County was awarded a pretrial services grant for, that runs January 1st into this fiscal year. It was, the amount was $8,926. So for many years, we have provided probation services, and this adds a new component to our program. So what it does is it provides pretrial recommendations to the court on whether they should detain or at least defendants incarcerated in jail, and it also provides pretrial supervision for defendants prior to their sentencing. So right now, I'm in the process of the, working on the implementation plan for that, and we're going to be hiring two additional staff to provide the pretrial services. So with this new component comes additional responsibilities for myself, as well as our office manager, who I'll note has been with us since April 2002. I worked with Piedmont Court Services many years ago, from 2002 to 2004, so about, about two years before our turn as a director. So there was room in the budget for the increase in salaries, so what I'm requesting is a 10% increase of salary for myself as office manager. And I will say that for my responsibilities, it's really the direction and management of the program and starting the implementation of pretrial services. And for the office manager, she does a lot of things with record keeping with our brand and involved a lot in the day-to-day operations of the staff, so we're going to be increasing staff by, by two with our agency. So that will be my request.
And there's no, this is more or less bypass funding, so there's no cost to the county, is that correct?
That's correct, there's no county funding.
And I, I got a question, though. You said, you, you said 10% for you and the office manager, what about the rest of, the rest of your staff?
Well...
And what's that FTE, anyway?
I don't anticipate, I may have, I'll let, let us know if I find out that I need to crawl screen some of the staff, where I will probably run into that gate when, if there are, both the pretrial staff and myself are out in the office and would have to meet with pretrial defendants, I may have to do some crawl screening, but I'm not 100% sure whether I would do that or just make sure I have the staff available myself, you know, to, to pretrials, have always someone in the office to cover the pretrial business of that.
Donald, this is Doug. Is it fair to say that you requested increase for the executive director and the office managers due to, those are the two positions most impacted by the additional workload of adding additional positions in the office?
Yes, that's right.
I'm on that board, so I, I think I would, I'm going to have to change.
Mr. Townsend, does that make sense as far as the impact on those two? Donald, I talked through it and why...
I mean, if they're working, after work, it'll be spread, it'll be shifted down or delegated down to your, your other office staff, I think that's a little bit unfair, if they're going to have to be assisting with the workload.
Right.
Now, if you and your administrative assistant go absorb all that, I can understand it, but, I mean, that's just me.
Yeah, that's a good question. It would, where other staff would, you know, for those other agencies I've worked for, where, because we're in a smaller office, coverage becomes an issue, you know, so I'm really probably going to have to take on some of that workload is pretrial staff without, so if I have an investigator that's on vacation, I have to do investigations for them.
I mean, the money, it's no cost to us, but as a director, that's something you probably may want to, because that could have a tremendous morale, an impact on the staff morale. So, I mean, again, it's no cost to us, but as a director, that's something you may want to think about.
Well, if I might suggest, for the director and the office manager, 10% increase and 5% for your other workers, since everybody's going more than likely to be affected.
I'll second that. No, I can't vote.
You can't vote.
But I guess the question, Donald, is can you shift the funds around to be able to accomplish that?
It would probably be a pretty difficult way, but now, I could probably, when we get the full grant next year, for the whole fiscal year, I could probably, you know, I could definitely manage that for this six months with, because what we're having to purchase a lot of, now, is coming out of a lot of the funds, is because of COVID, we're having to buy a lot of virtual equipment, and it's just office supplies, so it's the new staff that are company.
Well, if it's for six months, let's do 5%.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Yeah, I was at a hard time hearing, exactly what you said there with this way, with the, the first place that I can understand that, with 10%, that's a crazy. I, I don't know, I think that might be a little...
Well, it's, it's definitely up to the board. Are you suggesting maybe a 5 and a 5 for this 6%, for this six months, Bobby, and then we come back and revisit it?
I think that would be more than this.
Now, what about the other staff, though?
Well, I, I think at this, go, go ahead, Bobby.
Of a 5, are we going to lie?
I don't know, that's not...
Can you absorb that, Williamson? Across the board, 5% for everybody, or 3% or 2 and 1/2%?
Across the board?
Yeah, was that, was that satisfied? Do you, will you have the money to absorb it, to do that?
Well, if, if you're saying 3%, so we have...
I mean, again, I don't know how many employees you have and how much money you're talking about, but...
Yeah, it's, it would be seven employees, because we have a lot part-time, so seven full-time employees. If you look at that three, that would be 21%.
So if you look at some, I would, you may want to think about something across the board for everybody, make it all-inclusive, except for your 5 and a 5, maybe look at a little difference.
Donald, I think, I think that what the board is saying here is if, if you, if you were going to, if you're going to do a salary increase, that it would possibly be 5% for you and a 5% for the office manager, and then a 2 and 1/2 or 3% for everyone else. Can you absorb that, was the question?
Or take the remainder of the money?
Or take the remainder of the money and, and split it evenly?
I could take the remaining money and split it evenly. I want to all, all come out.
That's, that's more, that's more equitable...
I'll second that.
Yeah, that, that's, at least that's, they getting something.
Is that, is that what you were thinking, Bobby, more in line? Bobby Jones, you still with us?
All right, now, I'll, I'll make you...
No, no problem. Is that more in line with what you're thinking, a 5% to, to the director and the office manager, and to split the other equitably between the other employees?
Well, it feels more fair, I doubt, but, you know, to come in and within three months of being employed, that's a pension raise, that's...
Yeah, we, I, I understand, I understand exactly where you're coming from. Well, I think the pleasure of the board would be, it's been a motion made that way. Is there a second to a 5, a 5 and, and split? Go ahead.
Look, I, I'd like to see the numbers that are on the vacant board, probably, too.
Should we table it?
Yes, ma'am. Lou?
In fact, it's more exciting next month, is this, is this quite aligned with that for real estate?
All right, hold on, Bobby, Lou Gillum's got a question. Go ahead, Lou.
If, to me, he needs to take his numbers of what he's got to work with, the budget, divide it by the number of people, and then come back to us and tell us, "Look, I can do a 2, a 3, or whatever."
And that's what I was going to suggest here. He needs to come back.
The pleasure, the pleasure, go ahead.
I was going to suggest if we can authorize him to basically, basically accept the grant, but come back and, and bring the salaries back to us to the next meeting, we can approve that in February.
I was going to say that I think the pleasure of the board is going to be, at, at this point, to accept the grant, but to come back before there's anything done next month.
We can accept the grant, appropriate the money to the budget, that way he can move forward, hire his new folks, and then we can make the salary adjustments once the board approves that in February.
It sounded like, well...
That sounds a whole other thing.
Okay. All right, Bobby, that, Bobby's put forth a motion to do that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second. I was going to say, and that way, everything is strategically mapped out, and you achieve that.
All right, Bobby's got the motion, and Lou is seconded. Oh, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
Lou Gillum?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out, we, I had asked Donald to pull together some comparisons on salaries for his position, when he had included that and neglected to include it in the packet, but we do have that information, I'll make sure it's in your packet for next month as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Donald.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Appreciate it. Cheryl, we've got some proposals, personnel committee policy.
Good evening.
So we had a meeting with, actually, I didn't have a meeting. I gathered up information from different board, different counties, and compared their leave accrual versus our leave accrual, and the sheriff's department leave accrual versus our current sheriff's department leave accrual. And basically, it came back that most of the law enforcement offices are doing the same leave accruals as the county offices. So we want to try to figure out what kind of work week the sheriff's department does versus the county employees.
How, how much difference? Go ahead, Jerry.
What is their current work, what is your current work week now, FSLA work week? Is that what you're talking, referring to, Cheryl?
Theirs, mhm.
Yeah. Cheryl, what's your current FSLA work week now? You know what?
24 hours, how many, how many hours off, those kinds of things?
Well, we've got more than one, one schedule, too.
That's what they're asking. I don't have that information.
See, now, some, when I talk about FSLA work week, I'm talking, some, most people, white college jobs, Monday through Friday, you could set it up from Tuesday to Wednesday, seven days, you know, well, sometime you include the weekend in case you get somebody to work over to get time to adjust it off before the end of the work week, so.
We've got some that do work Monday through Friday, 40 hours, and we've got some that work 10 hours a year, they all, you know, like, three days.
Three days, exactly.
Okay. They bury.
Okay.
What, we're going to try to come up with a 12-hour shift for the other...
Right, okay. Cheryl, what are, what are some of the other counties? What are, did you?
I didn't look at their, their parts of the FSLA. We mainly asked about the leave because we wanted to try to figure out a way to get leave comparable to our leave.
Mhm.
For the sheriff's department, so that we had a starting point going forward from what they had to what we have now.
So what are you, what are you recommending?
We're recommending that the personnel committee meet and look at the different policies, and come up with an amendment for the county policy, personnel policy, for standard work week for the law enforcement officers, and then to provide leave accrual for them that matches similar to ours, and is equitable to them for the work that they do versus the work, the work week that we have.
Does the personnel committee want to do that? Do you, Tony, do you want to be there also so that you can kind of give your...
Sure.
Would the, would the existing personnel committee that we have right now, do you all want to set a date or anything, Jerry, and just kind of...
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I'll get with, I'll get with you tomorrow, Cheryl, before the week, and come up with a date, and then we can reach out to...
Then come, come, come back, come back to us next, next month, is that, that work, and that will give us, give us that time to...
And the sheriff, I'll let you know when we meet, so you can be present. I'll get with Mrs. Dempsey. We can do that.
In the meantime, Cheryl, you might want to just call some of the other counties and just see kind of what theirs, what theirs is, just to get a, some feedback. It may not work for us, but it may give us, give you a little something. That, that'll take care of the, the office and everything, is that correct? When you do that, it'll, it'll cover it all.
That is the plan, yes, sir.
Be all-inclusive.
Yes, sir. Then, at the December board meeting, the board authorized payout for the leave balances for the sheriff's department based on the county's current personnel policy, and so I have put together some numbers based on our accrual, and I meant to hand these out, but these are the...
Thank you. Sure. Jerry, can I have one, please? Thank you.
You'll get one, Beverly.
I want one, only one.
Sorry about that, meant to get them out to you previously. So the, when they first came to the board, it was about $440,000 that they wanted to pay their sheriff's department. We got our figures to, and that was as of October. When we got our figures, it was quite a bit lower, and now it's even lower than it was originally, so it's down to $16,254.06. And that's based on the county's current policy for leave accruals and leave payouts.
Can I ask you a question, though?
Yes, sir.
Are they leaving, if we paid us all shares, are these people still at the max? Maximum carryover?
They will be at the maximum carryover for the county, yes.
We're on the duty, Paul, so it's been during much time for the duty of the sector time off. And all reason we ask is for this this year because of COVID and they couldn't take off.
I understand that.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I just want to make sure, if they had the max, I mean, anything they accrue from, you know, I, it's still, carry is over, your maximum accrual, so this will help, but you right, if you don't watch it, you'd be right back in the same situation again, unless something done.
Exactly.
I guess at this point, does everyone understand what they're, what they're asking for?
I moved that we go, that we approve the said fund, $16,254, six cents for the pay to sheriff's department for carryover leave balances for this year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lou seconds, in that case, it's been properly seconded. Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bobby Jones?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved.
And the last item on my agenda is the current positions that are open for the county. We currently have the Director of Finance open, we have the Director of Economic Development Grants and Tourism, and we have... And we have a part-time office associate and the machine operator position. All of those have been out in the last two weeks, and we should be, I have two applications for the part-time associate and one application for the economic development, and we've received no other applications as of yesterday.
The part-time associate, would that, is that for the?
That's for our, that's for Board of Equalization on our office as well.
Part-time?
Yes, sir.
Well, part-time is in short time of time. That's what we discussed tonight. So it's going to come on, come on for the Department of Equalization at this time to cover the staff's, the county staff's time while they're, while they're doing that, and then look at it long-term as to whether we need something so many hours a week or whatever. Now, that's, that was something that was brought up in the Audit Committee. For those of you that are, that are not here, Bobby and Jim, uh, it was brought to our attention in, in a couple of different, couple of different ways, and it actually was brought to my attention earlier this week that the county staff is kind of boggled down. Some of the ones cannot hardly do their job for answering the phone or whatever else, and I don't know whether that's partly because of the COVID or what, and that people cannot come in personally, but it certainly, certainly covers you all up. And I think that, I think that all the staff would agree that that has impacted us now as to whether they're going to need it long-term or not. That's going to be for, up, up to us to decide. But we talked about it in the Audit Committee tonight, just because it came up, because everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, the people that were there were, were talking about the salaries. Anyway, we have the position that is out there right now during the Board of Equalization to, to alleviate some of the, of what's going on in the, in the county office. And after that, we will need to look at it maybe not as a quote-unquote "full-time", but maybe a full-time, part-time, if that makes any sense. So is there any questions, Bobby or Jim, just what we're talking about?
No, not from Lou. No, I think I was trying to.
Okay. So that's, I guess that's more or less just an update as, as of right now, and we'll, we will, we'll see who, who decides to throw the name in the hat, in the green, or see from there.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, sir.
Emergency management. Trey, come on up. Come on down.
All right, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So before you is the update number seventeen of the COVID pandemic. As you can see below you, your numbers comparison from the last month's meetings. If y'all remember, I alluded to the Thanksgiving holiday, Christmas holiday, and the numbers and what they were going to do, and that's come full circle here, as you can tell. Currently, there have been twenty-eight outbreaks in the Piedmont Health District. You can see there's been twelve in correctional facilities, eleven in long-term, three in health care, the colleges and universities, and concrete settings have leveled out to, you know, none currently. COVID vaccine update, as Dr. Nash had reported last month, the COVID vaccine was on the way. Vaccines for Group 1A have started. Centra started about a week ago, right before the first of the year, right after first of the year they started. Piedmont Health District started this past week. Group 1B is on the horizon. We found out late this evening that 1B is scheduled, anticipated to start on the nineteenth of January. More information that'll be coming out shortly. Some of the districts, if y'all remember from the governor's press release, had already been given permission to start ahead of time due to their population of 1A being populated, uh, vaccine. The rest of the districts obviously will follow according to the governor's plan, according to the CDC. But Piedmont Health is going to be moving in that direction first of next week. The Virginia Department of Health website available. It shows what phases each district is in. If you have any questions, or if constituents have a question about where they are, that website is very interactive. You can click on it, type in basically who you are, and it'll tell you where you fall and if your vaccine is available in your district. Like I said, the first shipment of vaccines arrived since early, late 2020 of December, and Piedmont Health, uh, last week. The percent of positivity has increased in our area to sixteen point four, uh, the state is sixteen point four. This is, again, the highest since the start of COVID. Spikes in the cases are currently stressing the health care systems in and around our area. Many of the hospitals and mortuaries in the region are at or near capacity. The local ERs have been just overwhelmed. They've been going on diversion status. Unfortunately, in this area, there's not a lot of places that EMS can divert to. There's, there's only so many hospitals in the area. So they've been making the do, but that gives you longer turnaround times at the hospital. Ambulances are waiting up to two hours to drop a patient off and get back in service, so. Feaquod School returned from break this past week. Longwood University and Hampton Sydney are in back in. I think some are still moving back in, from what I can tell. The county courthouse offices and facilities, new screening processes have started, security. Basically, when you come in, you got to take your temperature, give your name, give your phone number, where you're going, and then proceed through the security checkpoints. Working on a couple bottlenecks with the Sheriff's Office now in the morning and on busy court dates, trying to streamline that process. I think we've come up with a pretty good alternative for the county employees. We're going to try that out here in the next couple of days. I think that's going to work out pretty well. Jury trials, I left it read, even though there's no extra information on there. To best of my knowledge, they've been postponed a little bit later again due to a Supreme Court order. So we've got the infrastructure in place for the jury trials as requested, just on postponement again. And as I was talking about with the hospitals, the Central Southside COVID Unit and ICU are staying at capacity, if not full or beyond capacity. And like I said, ED's been an awful diversion. Anybody that doesn't know what diversion means is basically they either go on diversion for, you know, emergency room being full, COVID being full, ICU being full, they just have no rooms, period. Southside does a very good job of working with the local agencies because they know there's nowhere else to go, but at some point in times, there's just nowhere to go. Two Mondays ago, there was seven trucks sitting at the hospital for two hours. So, oh, that's a long time. And when you tie up the three ambulances in the county, two Prince Edwards and one of Maherans, for two hours, there was just nobody else to respond to. Maheran actually transported a call to Halifax from Hampton Sydney just to get some patients moving in different directions. On your next sheet, you'll see the call volume for 2019 to 2020. We have a slow, a slow tick up, and I'll contribute most of that tick up probably to COVID here lately. Fire service, the AFG grant was, has been done. I'll be working with Melanie and her CRC staff over the next week or so to get that finalized and submitted for reimbursement. There is a new AFG grant that's came out with the county. We're going to tie this in with the cares kind of money that was there for the air packs, try to get the rest of the air packs for the county they need basically at a five percent match. So the departments have already will, willing to put their five percent up for the air packs. What they need, this will be a small amount of money out of their pocket to finish off this whole purchase and project that they have going on. So I'll be working with the departments and then working with the CRC to get that finalized and submit it for them. Public information, so PSA campaign to promote the COVID vaccine. Y'all saw the photos we did earlier, the shirts. So we're, we're pushing vaccines. We're pushing Prince Edward County to get vaccinated. We're trying to stop it in the county and just, just take a breath and, and move back. So the shirts are here. Y'all saw those earlier. The banner's going to be hung behind the courthouse for everybody riding by to see Vaccinate Prince Edward. As you noticed, the banner said hashtag Vaccinate Prince Edward. So we're going to start a social media campaign and push that. We're going to try to tag anything we can, anytime somebody takes a picture, and we can put it on the bottom of the photo, let everybody see it that we can. In order to start a social media campaign, we've got to have social media. So I've been working with Doug, and Maggie helped me a lot with some stuff that she had already done behind the scenes, and we have launched a Facebook page. Uh, I wanted to show it to y'all tonight, but apparently Facebook has a, a jail time. You have to be so long before they let you find it, apparently, from what I've seen. It says it could be up to seven days. It's live. I posted the photo from earlier because I wanted to show it to you, but, um, Google information says that it could be up to seven days. So be looking for that. I'm going to go around and I'll start inviting everybody I can to it. So when it does go live, we'll get out of jail, and everybody will say, hey, look, they have that Facebook page. But we'll, you'll see a lot of vaccinated Sheriff's Office, we're trying to work with them to get some photos taken and fired EMS. So we're going to push that vaccine. We're going to push a whole bunch of good community information across and just try to keep some transparency through social media. So if there's anything y'all like to see or do, please let me know, and we'll, we'll work towards that. I also have a plan to use some of the message boards to try to push out this plan, this Phase 1B, 1C, general public vaccinations. We can flip those signs for a couple of days, let the public know, hey, if you're in the 1B range, come get your shot. Call the Health Department, put the phone number up. We'll use them as best we can. That's what we got them for, so we're going to push that message out everywhere we can. Planning the coordination, we coordinated, we're coordinating with Virginia Department of Health and Centra on vaccating, vaccinating the first responders in Prince Edward County. We're working on getting a list with all the firefighters. EMS has pretty much already been done by Centra ahead of time. Fire's coming up now. We got this going, green light go-ahead for the nineteenth, hopefully, and we'll get them straight with going. We're also working with them to try to do some masks vaccinating when and the time allows for a do-drive-through or whatever may need the case. We've got infrastructure in place to help them with that process. And let's see. The last thing is the state LMPGS grant. The grant was approved. We're working on purchasing those items now. That will entail a second round of health equity for Prince Edward County citizens, which will be somewhere between four to five thousand bags of masks and hand sanitizer again to put out. So we'll be reaching out again to y'all, you know, reaching out to the Inner Faith Collective, the food pantries, whoever we can find to help push those bags out to make sure that Prince Edward stays safe. And if you would notice on the very back of this whole packet, it's the Virginia Department of Health Vaccine Distribution Schedules, 1A, 1B, 1C. So if you have any questions, you can kind of read through there and see where you fall. The last thing I have is the, back in September, I came to the board requesting, Hampton Sydney was requesting permission to apply for a grant for Zol Monitor Care, said they were, they liked to see them go that direction. I worked with Hampton Sydney and the CRC submitted that application on their behalf. We were notified first of the year, they were awarded that grant on an eighty-twenty match. So that'll be about six to seven thousand dollars of county money, the rest of it's state money to put that asset into Hampton Sydney. We'll come back in February with the appropriation request to make sure that purchase happens, so. Do I have any questions?
Trey, when should shirts be available for delivery?
Uh, I'll refer that to Sarah. I was trying to figure out, we haven't really got into that distribution level yet.
You don't know, okay.
Well, I would say, I think Dr. Bright, you may be the only board member who's actually a card-carrying COVID shot recipient.
Yes.
So the shot, the T-shirt says, I got the shot.
Oh, okay.
So I think you got the shot.
So why don't you get the shot, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a, we obviously can't give them to everybody in the county.
I didn't look at exactly what was on it.
Yeah.
So the front of it says, I got the shot, ask me why.
Okay, so can I get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
And in the back, we just were trying to be clever.
Oh, that's nice.
There you go, Miss Pride. There's yours.
That's, I think I got all larges out. And I, I get you whatever size you want, Miss Pride.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, any?
Trey, is there any, any questions for Trey? Comments? Very good update.
Appreciate all you've done.
Yeah.
你在这个岗位上
Absolutely. Thank you for the comment. Thank you too, Trey.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Maggie, tourism. Come on in and talk to us.
Happy to do so.
Trey, I got to tell you, I'm so happy it wasn't just me, because a couple of months ago, we tried to go live for the first time, and we were in Google jail too, so. Good evening, folks. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stanley. So happy to stand before you tonight and always loving to talk about tourism because it's an exciting opportunity for what we have going on here. We've come a long way in the fourteen years that I've been here, seen incredible growth with entities like Hybridge Trail State Park and the Outdoor Venture Park, new restaurants like the Fish and Pig and North Street Press Club, new lodging like the Hotel Wine Oak and the Glamping teepees. If you haven't seen those, you are missing out. And don't forget, our Third Street Brewing, I'm sorry, Three, Three Street Brewing, and now the beginnings of a distillery thanks to tonight, so congratulations on that. Find what you love in Farmville is the hashtag we've been using, and it's going to be the catchphrase for this community for a long time. And I truly believe it's all about partnerships. Partnerships is what makes it happen because it just plain makes sense. Unless you've got an unlimited budget, you've got to find ways to, to leverage your funds with other folks dovetailing with what their needs and cross-promoting each other, or even dual-promoting each other. I firmly believe we all win when we work together. So I spent a lot of time working on some partnerships here, and I'd like to tell you about just a couple of them. Probably the most important relationship, partnership that I've worked on is with Hybridge Trail State Park. Many of you here were involved with the development of the park since its inception, but were you aware that the master plan called for a visitor center for that park? And this is a park that drives straight through Prince Edward County and in the town. And we already have a visitor center, so I knew that that could be a bit of a concern for us. As soon as they appropriated the funds and started the, the work towards it, in sometime in 2021, they're going to have a visitor center out at Camp Paradise Road. Well, if you know where Camp Paradise Road is, it's right off of Aspen Hill Road, right? Which is right there on 460. So all these visitors, two hundred thousand visitors a year on average, driving out to Aspen Hill, pulling off to go to the bridge, spend the day, spend a wonderful, marvelous time out there, get back on the car, get back on 460, and go home. And that's not going to be a very good thing for our community. So working with Hybridge Trail all these years to try to get them to understand the Find It in Farmville campaign, which was the first big campaign we did, pushing business back towards us, because at our visitor center, our number-one job is telling people where to go spend their money. And that's my favorite part of the job. But they've been doing, got it, didn't you? They've been doing that for a long time now, pushing business back to us so that we could push business back into the community. Now, because that relationship has been going on for so long, they're about to get this visitor center, and that's not going to stop. They're going to continue to push business to us, and we're going to continue to push business to them, and that didn't cost a dime. And that's the best kind of partnership. But with these, with the monies that you have allocated me over the years, I've also been involved with a couple of other partnerships that did cost annual dues. Probably the biggest one is Virginia's Crossroads, which started out as Virginia's Retreat. It's the third oldest tourism, tourism, regional tourism marketing consortium in Virginia, the third oldest. And Prince Edward County was a charter member when it was founded in nineteen ninety-three. We pay forty-five hundred dollars a year in dues. There are eleven other local governments, plus the Virginia State Parks that are part of this entire region, and one of the national parks, the one in Appomattox, are all paying members. That gives us access to sixty-three thousand dollars a year in marketing funds. That's what your forty-five hundred dollars leverages. Plus, we write a lot of grants, which I'll get to in a minute. I've been the chair of this organization for the last five and a half years. The Heart of Your, uh, The Heart of Your Adventure is the partnership that was founded by the town and the county back in two thousand and six, when I first started. Both the town and the county pay two thousand dollars each annually, and that money has been put together to, to, again, further leverage what we have. We write additional grants, and we created brochures. We've created a website that we used for a while. The county allocated in two thousand and seven the opportunity to make the visitor center a certified visitor center. And what that means is that all of our brochures are allowed to be in all twelve of the Virginia Welcome Centers around the state for free. That's a twelve hundred dollar a year fund if you were to put your brochure in there. Additionally, there are seventy-five other certified visitor centers, and they are all required to have our little brochure. We have to have theirs too, but they have to have ours. And that's reach we would never have had without that partnership. First, the county allocating the funds to make us into a certified visitor center, and then the two thousand a year to help develop and keep promoting and developing and designing new brochures. Over my time here, I've written about five hundred thousand dollars in tourism grants. Most of them were through VTC, but two of them were through the Tobacco Commission. Those were the two biggest ones. They were all written sometimes one, two, or three grants a year. They were all written, sometimes one, two, or three grants a year that were written. And as a member of these groups, Farmville, Prince Edward County got the biggest bang out of it, because, I mean, let's face it, we got the most going on, right? At least I think so. Just this past year, Virginia Tourism Corporation offered two different grant opportunities that really blew me away. Both of those were non-cash matching. This has never happened before. That was amazing. First grant was for $10,000, and I reported about that a few months ago. The town and the county each kicked in $2,000 apiece, so that gave us $14,000 to spend. Part of that funding, I mean, these grants were written mostly to promote safer travel for our visitors, get them to come out to places like our parks and to find other outdoor activities, and then, of course, they'll stop in at a restaurant or a shop and pick up something. Every dollar goes a long way. You saw part of what that $14,000 paid for downstairs when those of you took the picture with that Love Works. That's the brand-new Love Works that I've been working on for the last several months. Audrey Sullivan did the painting on that. It's going to go out to Camp Paradise Road after they open up again. With 200,000 visitors a year, they're going to come out there to take that picture. Everybody wants to get their picture taken with all the Love Works. That's going to be posted on Virginia.org too, by the way, to help promote our region. But people will come out there, they'll see that, and they see that Farmville, and they got to come into town and spend their money. And that's what we want. Is there a theme here? Am I sensing a theme? Other things that we're doing with that money, I've got two new videos that are in production right now, and those should be done before the end of January. And they have the hashtag Find What You Love in Farmville, Wander Love, and visit Farmville.com, which is where we're trying to push all of the business to. So we're encouraging all of our businesses and all of our other entities to be listed on visit Farmville.com so that we can keep increasing our bang. The brand-new Love that we talked about, that's downstairs. Cheryl, would you pull up that banner for me, please? There's roadside banners with this exciting new graphic that we just developed. I love this banner. These are three-foot by six-foot banners. They will, there'll be 10 of them printed, seven of them will go to the entrances into Prince Edward County. So those people driving 460, 360, 15, whatever, they're going to see that, and when you look at that graphic, that is what explodes out of our area. We have so much going on, we can't even contain it in one little graphic. So then, three of them, they'll be right in the town limits too. I've already talked to the town about that some months ago, and they're excited to put them up too. People come off of 460, coming into the library, coming in past Riverside Park, they're going to see that banner, Find What You Love in Farmville, and they're going to spend their money. So, thank you, Cheryl, that's a wonderful one. Some digital marketing that we'll be doing this spring with, again, using this new graphic. And then the scavenger hunt that I told you about last month, that has been having a lot of success. We've had at least 250 of those given out. And people come in to the visitor center and go, "Where do I get my scavenger hunt?" They don't care about anything else, they want that. So I'm really loving that. So that's what the 14,000 is going to be spent on. Then I just recently learned that I had written another grant for, I'd hoped for 20,000, that was the max, but they did give us $10,000 more to spend. Again, non-cash match. I love it, this is great. That funding will be used to further promote this Find What You Love in Farmville campaign. We're going to put those two new videos on Comcast throughout the state, and those videos will be on for about four to six months, depending on the deal that I can get with them. And then some print and digital ads in two periodicals, one's called Mid-Atlantic Outdoors and the other is Recreation News. Those are both well-known outdoor magazines, and they promote to people who have money and time to spend traveling to our little community, right? What I want to have Cheryl pull up now are these two videos that were just recently done for Virginia's Crossroads. We had created 12 videos, max, two for each community, two of each, six of the communities. These are going to be put on Comcast for six months this year. And so if you'll watch right now, this is, there's 30-second commercials, so go ahead and hit play on that, Ms. Cheryl, and let's see what you think of it.
Where will your trail take you? You can experience culture.
Oh.
Outridestory. The Great Outdoors. Exciting adventure. And set aside some time for leisure. Find your path in Prince Edward County, part of Virginia's Crossroads. Trail racers, welcome.
That's nice.
That's the first one? Thank you. You might see one or two people in there you recognize. You got the next one she's going to pull up, do you see it up there, Cheryl? There we go.
Where will your trail take you? You can experience the Great Outdoors. Exciting adventure. Outridestory.
Sheriff.
And set aside some time for leisure. Find your path in Prince Edward County, part of Virginia's Crossroads. Trail racers, welcome.
All right. Thank you. Excellent. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them, but I'm really excited about where this community is going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Excellent job.
Thank you, Maggie, for everything.
All right, Ron, it'll be hard to act follow, right?
Hey, you, hey, stay in the re, swing that one, and swing that one.
And I'll start with mine with Maggie as the re-part of it, I'm the tired.
That's right. First, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chair of the Board, for allowing me to serve you for 13 years. Been quite a learning experience, different than what I have done in the past, and I think we made pretty good progress. Mr. Stanley, we want me to update you on projects we've got running right now. I'll start with PIFIA, stuff that was purchased with the CARES Act money. The kitchen equipment is here in storage. Paving for the handicap parking is done, the carpet is just about done, they figure they got one more day. Two of the HVAC units have been replaced, the lights have been upgraded to LED, the generator is here. Transfer switch, that's a little different, we're hoping it will be here in March and installed either late March or early June. And that is all that public work has out there. The next thing would be the security matters that Judge Blessing sent out. His carpet will cost just about $4,000 to get installed. The company we talked to can do it in late February, early March. The awning for the judge's door, $2,900, and that's about four weeks out. Changing the Sally Port door swing, the door itself is $2175, it should ship $122 and be installed within a week or two after that. The card reader for outside that door is right around $5,000, and I do not have any progress as to where that material is at, so as soon as that is all in, they'll be out to install that portion of it. All of that was talked about in the Properties Committee, and we were directed to get all that started, so finally found a little time and we got a lot of that underway here. The roof that is right down below here, the flat roof, has a big bulge in it from water getting under it. That project will, should start this week. The roofing company figured Thursday they will be out here to start demoing the brick around the top, and then they'll take the rubber off, redo that. They figure about six weeks.
What was the quote on that, Ron?
Combined, better than $80,000, 40-something for the roofing and 40-something for the demo. I don't remember exactly, but it was right, right around a little over 80, if I remember The parking lot will be resurfaced and repainted, once that's done, it was, the decision was made to wait, let the roofing company get all their equipment in and out of here, and then we do the parking lot. Randy has been working around the courthouse, trying to get some stuff cleaned up. He's done a lot on the air vents, got a lot of those cleaned up that have been, have dust on them. We have lined up to have the atrium windows cleaned on both sides, get that cobwebs and everything like that off, taking off of those again. Working on getting someone in to redo the tile floors, wax, strip and wax. Jerry, I'd love it if you could send your crews out my way again sometime soon, but that would, that would be a great help.
Fantastic job.
Yeah, we can do it, we probably can do that.
And then we're hoping to get back on our schedule of rotation for painting offices. When I started, I wanted to get a 10-year rotation so we could keep cycling through, that kind of went on the wayside when the landfill came back into our laps and took up way too much of my time, so we're hoping to get that back, start it up again. We did some quoting, or got some quotes on air quality testing, there has been a couple of comments about that with the mold and COVID and all that. So we are moving forward, and Air Quality Test Company will be here Thursday to do samples on each of the seven floors, four on this building, three on the old building. We should have the results back from that in probably a month, month and a half.
You said mold, you got mold there?
It's just natural. We've got a little bit in a couple of the air handlers, we did some inspections on those as part of this air quality. We do have a little bit in a couple of the lower-level ones where we had water infiltration before. We got a quote on cleaning the seven air handlers we have, and that kind of took both Mr. Stanley and my breath away. That was a little higher than I think we had anticipated, so we're going to do a little more research and a little more quoting on that. The one air quality person we had out was very much into UV lighting, especially the UVC light band. They are installing those in hallways where there's a lot of people traffic, that UVC lamp will kill bacteria on the clothing and everything as the person walks underneath it. They have, they don't have to stop, nothing, just as they walk past it, it has proven to kill bacteria on their clothing.
UV what?
C, Charlie.
Okay.
A and B kill a little bit, but this UVC, they say 99.9%. So it's a very high kill rate, it alters the DNA of the bacteria cell, is what the publications he sent us say. So we're doing some research into that. Again, price was a little bit higher than we had anticipated, so we're going to look around to some different companies and see what we can come up with. They also recommend putting those in our air handler units, which would kill any bacteria that would grow inside of those air handlers and prevent it from being circulated through the building. So we're really at preliminary stages on that research, but Mr. Stanley and I both agree that's something I think we should definitely continue to research and look into. So there will be more coming from probably Randy on that one, since I don't think we'll have it by the time I leave. Landfill, the pain in my back. We just let another person go, so we're down to two operators again. Our full-time driver just went out, he was exposed to his mother who tested positive for COVID, so according to the policy, we sent him home until he could be tested and got his test results back. Without our full-time driver, that put us back in our regular old grind where Jerry, sorry about worship being overflowed, but yeah, we...
You mean versatile?
Or versatile.
Yeah.
They were supposed to get to a fill-in driver and a part-timers, and they just didn't quite make it.
They took care of it, we'd be good.
I took care of it on Monday. I ended up in a truck on Monday because of our shortage of drivers. Which brings up my second thought here. As I leave, you will be losing a backup driver. I fill in out there far more often than I should, not only on the hooklift garbage truck, but on the tanker truck that we haul leachate. It would be my recommendation, if I were to stay, that you consider hiring a full-time position, truck driver, Class A with tanker, so that three days a week, he could haul leachate water, and two days a week, he could do the hooklift truck. That way, we could kind of cover everything we can do away with the part-time, two-day-a-week driver on the hooklift, so we'd only be adding three days a week. We run into so many times that, just like with this COVID issue, it puts us in such a bind. The same thing on the garbage pile, we've been running with a skeleton crew out there for so long, if somebody gets sick, or, we had one gentleman out for 10 days because of the COVID. It really puts the other two operators we have in a bind. So I think if the budget can absorb it, probably a fourth operator, I think someone with some road-building experience, that way, they could get out to the sites, dress up the sites when they're not working at the landfill, and we kill two birds with one stone. We got fill-in for the landfill, but we can also get the sites caught up, something that we're seriously lacking in. I think that's about it. Any questions?
So, Ron, interim, so what are we doing about the driving that, are we subbing that out, or having someone contract? I know one time we, it was, who could place that at a rest?
Elite? Yeah, Elite Recycling was taking care of the recycling for us when Steps was shut down. So far, we've covered it with our people. We did hire a temporary part-time. When our part-time driver has heart attack, he has not really told us that, he has quit yet, so I talked to Mr. Stanley, we went with a temporary part-time driver two days a week. And then we've got our full-time driver, Paul Anglis, the operator at the landfill that has the actual license, is a Class A tanker. So he fills in. Jeff has a Class A, so he fills in a little bit, not as much as I'd like him to, but yeah, he's got other issues out there to deal with too, so. So far, we've handled it with one of the alternates jumping in the truck. In three and a half weeks, this alternate will no longer be able to do that, so you know, it's going to get tight, should something happen to one of the other drivers.
Ron, is the leachate more of a problem this year with all the rain?
Yes, this is, I think they figure the second wettest year in history, so yes, we've had an abundance of leachate this year. But we've looked into other ways of getting rid of it, and the costs are almost, you know, 3 million is a starting number.
How long did we sell, how elite to haul for us when Steps were there? Was it a couple of months, a month?
About three months it lasted. And that, if we went back to them hauling some of the recycling, it would alleviate some of the problem. Right now, as far as I see it, our metal recycling is our biggest issue. It takes us typically two hours to unload a single load at J&amp;J Recycling here in town. That ties up the truck for...
Two hours.
Yeah, two hours to sit there and wait.
Because by the time he pulled, by the time he hooked to it and pulls it in, gets there, he's got about four hours by the time setting and getting back there.
Yeah.
Elite was doing it for, what was they charging?
I think the arrangement was they charged us anything over, now I'm kind of pulling it out of my head, because it's been a while, 200 bucks a load, I believe, but if the metal recycling price was above that, we made that profit. They kept their 200 for the travel charge.
Anything over that, we got rid of two.
Part of the problem there is we've got a lot of 20-yard... Part of the problem there is we've got a lot of 20-yard bins out for metal because of the weight. We don't make enough to pay for that, so it's gonna cost us.
Am I right that Jimmy will bring a container up there and drop it?
He will. Um, I have not figured out if he will pay us for the metal or not. Um, we never have got a firm answer from him on that.
I know he did it for me up in Rustler. They would drop the container once it got full, I'd call them and come pick it up. Again, we didn't make much of it, but we recouped a little bit.
That was Elite, wasn't it?
Yeah, Elite, yeah.
With, with the metal, with the metal deal right now, this is something I can speak to because it's, I've been in it 20-some years. It's, uh, because there are so many people that have gone out of business of the small people, Jimmy and Elite and all the rest of them can't hardly keep up with the contracts that they have now, that's the problem. That's the reason why the two-hour wait is with at J&amp;J. It, it's just, it's just impossible almost for them to, to keep up. And that, that was something, you know, that we addressed when we went back with Steps on part of the recycling. But on the metal end, the county needs to look at, I'm not gonna say have to, because they don't have to at all. They need to look at having a place there to just bring that and dump it so that you all don't have all that time tied up and then loading it on a tractor and trailer and sending it somewhere where we actually get paid for it.
Yeah, if we could, if we could invest in a, either a shredder or a baler for that metal, yes, we would make out much, much better. That is quite an investment at the start.
But a logger or baler, either one would just, it will, it will pay for itself. I'm not gonna say in a short time, but it will pay for itself monetarily and it will certainly pay for itself in time because everything is right there. And it's worth a lot more because you actually, you actually get paid for what you have rather than just. In other words, if there's aluminum in the bin, if there's copper in the bin, if there's whatever else you take to Jimmy, you only get paid a steel price, no matter what, because he, all recycling yards buy it at the lowest grade if it's mixed. They never buy the mid-grade, it's always the lowest grade. So you only get paid for the lowest grade, no matter if you had a whole load that's worth $6,000, but it has steel in it. It's only worth 200, you only get $200 for that load. So it's a, something that the county is gonna have to look into, whether we hire someone to do a little bit of a study or whether we talk to some of the people. I, I have contacts running out the rear end because I, that's a business I've been in for so long. But, uh, something that, like, like you said, Ron, something we've gotta look at to do something because it's, and as time progresses, drivers and things become more specialized. They don't want to sit and wait for that either, so it's just a, something we're gonna have to look into. Thank, thank you for the.
That one is probably our biggest sore spot because of the amount of time we have to spend. Right now, I think I've got four bins sitting out at the landfill, waiting to be dumped. Just because we don't have the time to sit and wait. Luckily, with the purchase of the latest round of bins, I've got a few extras, so I can afford to leave those set. But eventually, we're gonna run out of extras too, so we're gonna be putting a behind again.
I have a question from Mr. Stanley. So who, do we have someone in place to step up and run acting role in the interim till we fill that position?
I think what you're gonna see, and we just preliminary talked about, and I know we're gonna talk about with Properties Committee next week. I think Randy's got his area and Jeff's got his area, and I've gotta figure out how to fill the other gaps. And, um, you know, some of it is these things like the equipment operator and the drivers and, and those pieces. You know, I, and I need time to, I think, evaluate what the needs are overall. Does it look like Ron exactly, or is it two other lesser positions at the other spots? I've gotta figure that out.
Maybe I, I phrase that question, Ron. Do we have someone that will be able to step in his shoes and keep the county, keep us operating?
So Jeff will keep the landfill operation, solid waste going, and we got, we're poised in Randy to take care of the facilities in this building, yes. And, and you're in a lot better spot with those two than we were, say, a year ago. I think Ron, Ron's done a good job of bringing them on board and training them up and, and, uh, but I've gotta fill these other holes like that Ron's talked about tonight and figure out how to make that work.
Ron, I had a friend of mine ask me about the metal at the landfill a few weeks ago. And he kind of part-time goes around and body shops and stuff and he picks up metal and he sells it on halves. And I told him, the only question I would have is insurance. Whether he would be covered being on county property and he loading something and he gets hurt. But if a man will do 50/50 and he'll haul it, that sounds like a deal to me.
Yeah, I guess that would be one issue. We recycle as much metal out of the garbage that dump, gets dumped on the working face and we have a bin sitting right there. So it would be more a case of pulling the bins and dumping them that way. So yes, I guess that would be an insurance question, a liability question. You know, I guess we can talk to J&amp;J, we can talk to Elite and see what kind of deal they'll give us. See which one will give us the better, you know, short-term at least, until we can do a compactor or shredder or something and go into that ourselves. If we go into it ourselves, we will be looking at more personnel because we will need someone to operate the machinery, someone to sort, a class A truck driver to haul the stuff away. Your distance is gonna be, how far would we have to haul it, Mr. Emmert?
Uh, Reeves will be your closest shredder to this area. Used to be, used to be Lynchburg and Rip, uh, Roanoke, but now Reeves will. Or if you can get into Gerdau, you could go to Petersburg.
So we're talking just about a day for a load.
Safe for load.
So you'd, you'd have quite a bit invested if we went into it ourselves. But yeah, we can, um, get some contact info and we can add, add him into the research. You know, I did see some, the report today that scrap metal is gonna make a rebound because metal prices just went through the roof. I tried to get some quotes together from Mr. Stanley before I leave for next year's budget and the one manufacturer of the open-top containers that we just purchased won't even give me a quote. He says unless you're willing to put a quarter down, we're not gonna waste our time because we need to purchase the metal today so we know how much to charge you when we're done with it. Because the metal prices are so volatile right now going up that, um, he figures, that same guy figures that scrap is going to follow it. It's just a little bit lagging behind.
It's the highest on the opposite consumer end than it ever has been.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna shift move, you know, to another topic, but the, um, the houses at the dumpster sites, I know we purchased those. I think we added the cannon, and the cannon, added the animal shelter idea. You know, the buggy barn, the.
Yep.
The replacement. Now, we purchased all those, I think, don't you have two or three more?
There's three more to purchase.
Yeah, but we didn't purchase some?
Not yet, nope.
Okay, okay.
You guys have approved them, I just haven't gotten to that.
We have, we approved the progress.
I will, if I don't get them before.
To do this too.
I will try and get that done before I leave.
Okay.
And then it'll just be a matter of finishing the inside.
That'll be, that'll, that'll finish that, that project with those three.
The last three buildings, yes.
Jim or Bobby, any questions for Ron?
I put them both to sleep.
Ron, thank you, thank you for all you did, not only for tonight, but for all you've done, we appreciate it.
Hey, so you want to take your mouth? No, I'm the tired part.
There's a truck driving job coming up pretty quick.
No, thanks. Thank you.
Ms. Terry, you have anything for us?
I do not have a report unless someone would like to ask me a question.
In that case, County Minister, we're gonna pass you right on by. You have any questions for? It's all you, Mr. Stanley.
She, she does have a report, I think.
No, she says she doesn't.
She didn't, you don't, you do or you don't. No report, no.
Come on, Terry.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, um, I want to thank Supervisor Townsend for his support as chairman and bringing me on board. I really appreciate it, Terry.
You're welcome, sir.
And I want to give a, a special thanks to both Maggie and Ron. You can see their dedication and passion for this community and, um, all I can say is may God bless you and your retirement. Community introductions, uh, the past week, I was able to meet with Mr. Wilk and I will be reaching out to other members of the board. Sherry McGuire from Longwood Small Business Development Center, Jennifer Cox at Longwood, Commercial Real Estate Developer and, um, Lou, I'm still working on that Cracker Barrel for you. Some other meetings, uh, VGA Piedmont Health District talking about vaccine rollout and Department of General Services relative to the Sandy River Reservoir Permit. I've got meetings set up the next month, hopefully again with Longwood. I'll be speaking at the Chamber of Commerce and also tomorrow, a meeting with, um, VDOT, our, um, Lynchburg District Administrator and our CTB Board Member. And certainly will hopefully talk about, um, our interchange project out there on Third Street and 460. Coronavirus, county staff continue to monitor the situation, take necessary precautions. Again, um, the sort of rollout of 1A immunizations on the 6th. We're looking at 1B on the 19th and, and Sarah will be getting with folks on, uh, our essential, providing essential services to make sure our staff can get, uh, the vaccine as soon as possible and include the board members on that as well. And we are continuing, Ron mentioned his staff's been impacted. We had a number of offices here in, in the courthouse that have been impacted. And you have one person who comes into contact, but then they come into contact with several other staff members and next thing you know, we have three, four people out waiting for, um, test results to come back before we can release them to come back to work. So we're constantly battling through that, we're looking forward, uh, to getting the vaccine. And the reminder is gonna be, you still gotta wear your mask even after you get the vaccine and potentially you could still be spreading it, so we gotta be conscious of that. I want to thank Trey Powell for his work on getting our county Facebook page up and running. We set it up, it's, it's a no-comment page. It'll be for us to push out the information. We're not looking to get into social media war, of war, war, war words. We're trying to push information out to the public and this will, we hope will be a good, um, platform for us to be able to do that. Budget, um, based on the board's adoption of the budget schedule, working with Crystal to get our, um, budget letters out by the 22nd. DSS lease, I've got that, um, here for you. There's a, um, facility cost agreement that is on the dais. There was one in the packet as well and we'll talk about that here at the end of my report, um, about trying to get that approved. Finance Director, we're hopeful that we, in the next month, we can get, uh, some decent applications on that and, uh, also the Economic Development Tourism Director position. Please report our, our pre-audit work was completed. And again, and we posted this notice, um, on our website pursuant to the state code, but in accordance with the requirements of the 2019 legislative session, amending section 15.22511 of the Code of Virginia effective July 1 of 2019, if a local county's audit is not completed by the statute, the local county must post a statement on its website with following information. That the required audit is pending, the reasons for the delay and the estimated completion of the audit. So we have posted that the required annual financial audit for FY 1920 is currently pending by the independent audit firm of Robinson Farmer Cox Associates CPA. The reason for the delay is that the county has had all of its information needed for the audit, the CAFR and the transmittal, uh, to the Audit of Public Accounts. Whoever has been in delay in the preparation of the financial statements, this has resulted in a delay for the actual completion of the audit and preparation of the CAFR. The estimated date, um, and preparation and the transmittal data to the Audit of Public Accounts is no later than March 31. We certainly hope to have RFC here in February to do the presentation. This just buys us an extra month, so we've already notified the state of that and met that requirement to make sure we don't get in trouble. And lastly, um, I wanted to recognize Ron again for his efforts to keep operations ongoing for the county despite the continued challenges of COVID. He's been helping us every day to make sure the garbage is, is hauled and the building's operational and things are clean and, and we can operate, so thank you, Ron. Again, I mentioned the facility cost agreement and really it's a, it's a lease for all intensive purposes for, uh, the DSS building. DSS moved in their building September 1 of 2019. We have not had a, a lease or a facility cost agreement in place, which means we have not collected any rent. However, we can go back, I believe up to 18 months. We will be able to recoup the, the rent back. Uh, and working with the state, we did, so we did, the project is a 15-year bond. 15 years, great, it's short and you can minimize the interest paid. A lot of times you do that to get a better interest rate, but really the depreciation is typically over a 30 or 40-year period. So we've depreciated and the way they do, they don't pay rent. They pay a combination of interest, cost and depreciation. So even though we're, we're taking that interest over 15 years, we have to spread it over the 40 years of the depreciation schedule. So in essence, we'll be getting, if you look at one of the last pages, about, um, eighty-three thousand, one hundred and six dollars a year, um, from them. Now, only 12% of that's local, the rest comes from the state, um, as part of their, um, funding formula for paying it. But the good news is hopefully we'll be able to go clawback and pull that rent back. I can't use the word rent, I get in trouble for that, but we'll get paid back to September 1 of 19. So, um, I would ask for the board's consideration. This will be on the Social Services Board Agenda next week as well, because they have to approve it and Roma will have to sign as the director as well.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion made to accept this repayment rather than a lease, is that correct?
Well, it's a facility cost.
Facility cost, yeah, facility cost agreement.
I will abstain since I'm on the Social Services Board.
All right, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Been properly made in second and Ms. Patty has decided to abstain. How about you, Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Patty's abstaining, Beverly?
Yes.
Uh, Bobby?
Yes.
Jim Wilk?
Yes.
Jerry Townsend?
Yes.
And Lou Gillum?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Informational correspondence, or anything there that we need?
I think you've got a couple reports and you've got a C, monthly CRC report, but you also had their annual report as well. A cannery report.
Every, everything else should be in your board pack. I don't think that it requires a vote or anything, it's just informational. Are there, are there any questions from anyone? If not, is there anything else that's, that you know on the agenda for this evening? How about you, Sarah?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you consider, um, recessing until 5:00 PM on February the 9th. We are anticipating that Jimmy Sanderson, the county's financial advisor, who is in the process of working with, um, the auditors on the financial data, will be updating the county's financial outlook for the board and for Mr. Stanley. So, um, at the moment, we have tentatively scheduled with, um, with Jimmy Sanderson, with Davenport to come down and provide that information in a briefing for the board of that, if something at all would be interested.
Last night, at 5, you said?
The 9th at 5.
Is there a motion made to recess until February the 9th at 5?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Pride?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jer, or, and Lou?
Yes.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it, thank you all. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it. Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, sir.
For the health department, for the scheduling-
One of the things I want to do is do an annual list.
Oh, they can call us.
Sure, sure.
I'm ready.
I think it's formed, it'll be come. I've offered myself, I've offered myself to do it.
Nice chair, Dr. Gray.
And then I'm gonna come up and get my t-shirt, Sarah. And I get my shirt.
And nice chair, Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Give me one minute, I'll be right back.